All right, good evening, everyone. Sorry for our delay in getting started tonight. I want to welcome all of you to our City Commission meeting. For those of you where it's your first time here, I would like to take a few minutes to walk through our agenda and the processes that we have in place as I want to ensure that I do everything I can to make sure that everyone who wishes to be heard tonight has an opportunity to speak. So this is an official City meeting with city business to be conducted. So we will start the meeting with an opportunity for public comment that is specific to action items. So these are items that we are voting on today. We also have two scheduled public hearings tonight. One is related to the Neighborhood Investment Plan, and the other is an agreement that we have with the Michigan State Historic Preservation. So if you are here tonight to be heard on either of those two scheduled public hearings, I'm going to ask you to stay put until I open up those public comment periods. And then with the large turnout tonight, we have set up an overflow space downstairs on the main floor. And as space in this chambers become available, we will invite others to come up. So we will have individuals helping people to make sure that we have a good flow. We do have videos downstairs where people are able to watch the meeting livestream. And so for public comment, we do have a number of procedures that we ask for people to respect. They're up on the wall over there if you want to take a look. So when you do come up for public comment, we ask you to come to this podium. We ask you to share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. You can see a timer right up here. Our city clerk will keep track of that. And again, because we have a large turnout tonight, we want to make sure that we respect the time that's allotted so that other people can come up and speak. We do have processes also if there is disruption. Again, disrupting a public meeting disrupts other people's opportunity to be heard. So if there is a disruption tonight, I will ask whoever is creating the disruption to leave so we can have decorum in the space and people can be heard. If I do have to recess, I will let commissioners and everyone know how long that will be for, hopefully, until we are able to bring people back together safely. A little different than in the past, we are going to start our meeting off tonight a little bit different. To begin our meeting tonight, I would like to initially pause for a moment of silence given the tragic events of this past week. And then we have invited Bishop McMurray to join us tonight. Bishop McMurray helped organize in partnership with Commissioner Womack, a community gathering on Sunday that we're very grateful for. So we'll ask him to join us for an invocation as we begin our meeting. And then we'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. And then before we get to the first opportunity for public comment on action items, I will turn to our City Manager to provide the latest update on the incident and process, and then we'll get to our action items. So that gives you a brief description of what you can expect tonight while we're together. So with that, I will ask you to join me for a moment of silence, and then we'll welcome Bishop McMurray to our space. Bishop McMurray, you're welcome to come to the podium. And again, thank you for being here with us tonight and for your leadership in the community.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Dear God, we are assembled here asking you for your presence and wisdom to convene this City Commission meeting. Our Grand Rapids community and its leadership must develop answers and solutions to complex matters before us, one of which is the death of our dear brother Patrick. We ask, oh God, that you would comfort his family that has been devastated by their loss. Give us all your peace that reassures the heart and releases understanding, your perspective of life that appreciates the value of all races and cultures on this planet Earth, and your love that embraces people, progress, and possibilities for all humanity everywhere. We stand as a melting pot of unique belief systems, and we respect the foundations and convictions of every race, creed, and color gathered here this evening. As we move forward, we ask for sovereign peace as we each identify with our own individual sovereignty and influence. I pray your blessings on these deliberations from point A all the way to point Z. And I pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Bishop. And now I'll turn to our City Manager to provide an update, and then we'll move to public... I'm sorry? Oh, roll call. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Should I do that before City Manager speaks? Yes. Thank you, City Clerk. We also have translators here, so before I turn to City Manager, sorry, City Manager, I will bring up our translators. We actually have two translators with us tonight. We have an individual who is able to provide interpretation services in Spanish as well as Swahili.
Good evening. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. These include interpretations during the meeting and for those who wants to provide public comment. Buenas noches. Estamos complacidos en proveer servicios de interpretación esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieren proveer comentario público. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Frida Canini. I will be able to help with Swahili translation and also English to Swahili.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And then I think I will turn to the City Manager now, and then we'll move to Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. So, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners, and to everyone in attendance. I want to highlight some information from an update that I provided earlier today for those who may or not have heard it. Our thoughts and prayers continue to be with the Leoya family for their loss, as well as our community as we grieve this very unfortunate incident which involved officer, involved shooting. And we also continue to pray for our officer as well in this incident. In the spirit of transparency, I want to continue to provide an update on the matter. Over the last eight days, our police chief has worked directly with community members and family and their representatives. He's also been involved in several opportunities for engagement and events so we can better understand some of the concerns of the community. And I want to support our police chief in his commitment for transparency to release the videos as previously promised on tomorrow. He announced earlier today that there was an announcement made about the release, and the chief will be holding a press conference tomorrow at 3:00 PM to unveil the video and to answer what questions he's able to do at that time. We anticipate that the body-worn camera, the in-car video, the doorbell camera, and the cellphone video will be part of the release. I do want to thank Mr. Brandon Davis, our Director of Oversight and Public Accountability, for his continued monitoring of the situation to ensure that we are operating in full transparency as much as possible. In addition to the community engagement, the city is also involved in several legal proceedings, several legal processes related to the incident. The family has obtained counsel, and the city will be cooperating also with the criminal investigation that is being done by the Michigan State Police. The city is also communicating with the Kent County Prosecutor to make sure that he can make a fair and just decision on charging. We're also receiving and preparing to respond for multiple requests for freedom of information, and we are taking steps in preparation for civil litigation. I mentioned earlier the chief's press conference tomorrow at 3:00 PM, in which he'll go over the details and go over the video in detail. The footage will be streamed as part of the city's YouTube channel, so you can see it on the city's YouTube channel tomorrow, following the press conference and following the press conference. We will provide a public link to the videos that were used to compile the presentation. And finally, we ask continued peaceful events. I want to thank those organizers over this past weekend of the multiple expressions that were done in demonstration of concern, marching from Amplify to the Center for Community Transformation, and how that was done peacefully, the demonstration even on this evening. And I have full confidence in this community that we can make sure everyone has the right, protected right to their First Constitutional, First Amendment rights under the Constitution. But we continue to pray for the healing of our community as we move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. So we'll now move to Pledge of Allegiance and then roll call, and then we'll move forward with our action items. So please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, I'll turn to our clerk for a roll call.
Commissioner Isasi.
Present.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. All right, next that will take us to our first opportunity for public comment. And as I said, these are specific public comments on action items. So earlier today, we had a number of standing committee meetings where we talked about issues and we voted. So if you are here tonight to be heard on a specific item that we're voting on tonight, now's an opportunity to come forward. Can I ask that you share your name, the city that you live in? You'll be given up to three minutes to speak, and we ask that you're explicit about what item that you're speaking to. All right, seeing none, I'll close that public comment. That'll take us to our approval of our minutes from our last meeting. This is our meeting from March 29th. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications.
The first one is a communication received from Northeast Citizen Action Association regarding noise concerns at Harside Food Solutions.
That is received and filed.
Communications received regarding justice for Patrick Leoya.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Roger Escobar regarding the treatment of the unhoused.
And that is received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
First one is a Tom Treasury report for the period of March 16, 2022 through March 29, 2022, in the amount of $21,64,257.66.
That is received and filed.
And Treasury report for the period of March 16, 2022 through March 28, 2022.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items that we voted on earlier today in one of our meetings where there was a unanimous vote. So tonight, with one voice vote, those items will be adopted. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next that will take us to our ordinances to be adopted. So we have one ordinance before us tonight.
It is a consideration of zoning ordinance text amendment to allow the reduction of residential lot width requirements.
All right, and can I get a motion?
Moved. Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Jones, you want to tell me about this?
Yes, Mayor, it was on the 29th of March when we established this evening, April 12th, as the date to consider a zoning ordinance text amendment that would amend zoning ordinance Article II. The applicant is requesting consideration of a text amendment that would allow flexibility in lot width to allow for new single and two-family infill development when certain conditions apply.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? This is very much aligned with our hopes around adding additional housing and infill. So with that, that's a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, next that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. So as I said, we have two scheduled public hearings tonight. The very first one is a public hearing on funding recommendations that total just over $8 million for activities supporting the fiscal year 2023 Neighborhood Investment Plan, the Home ARP Allocation Plan, and the Economic Resiliency and Recovery Investment Strategy. So tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Bohatch, who oversees our Community Development Department. And then I'll see if any of my colleagues have any questions. And if you are here tonight to be heard on these funding recommendations, I'll give you a chance to be heard. And then we will close this public hearing, and I'll go back to our community development. So Ms. Bohatch, do you want to tell us about this item?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So tonight, we are seeking comments from citizens about funding recommendations that support housing and community development activities under three plans administered by the Community Development Department. Those plans include the FY 2023 Neighborhood Investment Plan, the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan, also known as Home ARP Allocation Plan, and the Economic Resiliency and Recovery Investment Strategy. These recommendations propose investment of more than $8.3 million from a variety of federal sources. That includes our annual allocation or award of Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, Emergency Solutions Grants, and the Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Funds. It also includes supplemental home and CDBG funds from the American Rescue Plan and the CARES Acts. This public hearing is part of a 30-day public comment period that began on March 25th and will conclude on April 25th. So after tonight's public hearing, we are still accepting written comments that may be submitted to the Community Development Department by mail or by email at communitydev, D-E-V, at grcity.us. And all comments will be forwarded to the City Commission for consideration prior to approval for of final funding awards on March, I'm sorry, on May 10th. And we will accept those written comments through April 25th.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bohatch. Commissioners, anything to add before I open up for public comment? All right, so if you are here tonight to be heard on this scheduled public hearing, so again, this is very explicit to the funding recommendations for home and ARP and economic resilience and recovery, you're welcome to come forward, share your name, city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bliss, Council. Thank you for this time. I'm Sam Doherty. I'm with the Michigan AFL-CIO Workforce Development Institute, and this is in regards to the Access for All program, for which I am Director of West Michigan for that program. I'm here tonight to ask that the council reconsider the funding request of the Michigan State AFL-CIO Workforce Development Institute's Access for All Apprenticeship Readiness Training Program under Plan Outcome Number Seven, Improvement, Economic Opportunity. So I've been part of this program and helper on this program in West Michigan for over four years now and seen the success of it. And the success of our program through other areas and serving the underserved, people of color, women, and veterans is where we focus. And I'm proud to say that our Access for All program is the only equity-focused program with a track record of exceeding state benchmarks for placing women, people of color, and youth ages 18 to 24 into registered apprenticeship programs with a record of 83% employment rate after graduation. I've personally been part of seeing these lives change, and personally been part of seeing people find opportunity within the construction trades through apprenticeships and see them go from $12 an hour, part-time jobs, or what it may be, that after nine weeks of training, being accepted into an apprenticeship program, to where in some OGT opportunities, they're making up to $28 an hour on the check, changing their, changing lives drastically and impacting for generations as we see through this program as we offered it. We've seen more generational come in, children, cousins, so on, from the underserved neighborhoods that we provide this training for. It's a nine-week intensive program that's focused and done in partnership with the construction trades. They helped us develop this, and it is a gateway into their apprenticeships. And we feel very strongly that this should be reconsidered, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, others wish to be heard on this public hearing?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. It's nice to see some familiar faces on the commissioner, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Repart, Commissioner Isasi. I'm also here on behalf of the Access for All program, funding request under that Home ARP Allocation Plan. I'm Micah Perkins. I'm with the Michigan Building Trades. I represent the skilled trades for West and Southwest Michigan. I cover roughly an area from Manistee down to Indiana, a little bit west of Lansing out to the lake. Plumbers, pipe fitters, electricians, carpenters, all the, all the trades that are involved in building the buildings. We're in new kind of uncharted waters as an industry. We're aging out. I think the average age on a construction site right now is about 53, not really a sustainable way for us to grow. With the combination of shop being taken out of high schools, college being preached to the exclusion of everything else, as a community, we're suffering the effects of that, and as an industry, we're suffering the effects of that. Those are very simplistic talking points, but they kind of get to the overall problem. And all of a sudden, we're in this day and age where apprenticeships is kind of this new sexy thing, like it is a brand-new way of training people. Well, it isn't. We've been doing it for hundreds of years. Our apprenticeships, however, set the standard for what everyone else's apprenticeships are trying to copy. The Department of Labor Certified Apprenticeships that have rigorous man-hour requirements, turnout requirements. We track very closely how many people start our programs and finish our programs. But now we are experiencing competition with organizations who claim to provide apprenticeships as well. But these apprenticeships do not have the same kind of rigorous requirements associated with that, and they don't have the same outcomes. There is no other apprenticeship program or apprenticeship-style program that has similar outcomes and also has a similar level of effort of bringing underserved populations into truly what our careers and not just jobs. So it is a little baffling when a $90,000 funds matching request out of an over $8 million budget is declined, when it's a relatively small ask. And unlike our non-union competition, we don't ever take local, state, or federal money. We are all self-funded. For example, in the plumbers and pipe fitters where I come from, the only organization that spends more than that, more than them on training, is the US military. We spend about $450 million a year training our people. If you go through a plumbing apprenticeship over that five years, that we will spend $150,000 on you. And so it is a little hard to understand why this kind of investment that we are consistently making in our communities is not even attempted to be matched on a small scale. Be happy to entertain any questions after that. I believe most of you have my contact information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard on the recommended allocations?
Hello, my name is Cindy Hicks, and yes, I understand the topic is CDBG funds. I was a person that used to sit on that board for Community Development Block Grant Funding under the previous two mayors and represented the 49507 Third Ward. Those funds are really important to me. As someone whose family has suffered police violence and understanding where Community Development Block Grant Funding comes from, I would never want to see a single penny spent on community policing ever again. Okay? That money is for community members to be invested into communities, not police community members, but to invest in their lives. You know, all I can say, it's very frustrating for some of you looking at your phones when I'm trying to talk about how traumatic it is when your family's been assaulted by police.
Okay, no, no. Okay, I, I, this, tonight's meeting, if there's clapping, if there's, if there's disruption, I will recess. I want people to have a chance to be heard, and when people are speaking, when people are speaking, hold the time. You know what? It is her time to speak. I am, I am going to make sure that this, this space is made available for people to be able to speak and not be disrupted. That means that the expectations for this meeting are very clear, so I'm going to ask you to refrain from clapping and cheering and give people an opportunity to be heard. And that means also, this is, this is not helpful if we want to get as many people And that means also, this is, this is not helpful if we want to get as many people an opportunity to speak tonight. There's a lot of people who want to be heard tonight, and we're going to try to get through this so that everyone can be heard. All right. Mrs. Hicks, please continue.
It's Ms., because I don't have a husband. The police took him away. Yes, about Community Development Black Grant Funding, I think that the community has a right to know that when they appoint money to the community, that money also supports police on bicycles that survey you. Okay? You have a right to know that, that money does that. Yes, it covers community police officers. My child, after witnessing what she did, she didn't want to come today, and she's 12. And the conversation I had at 5:00 today, you should all know what she said. She said, "Mommy, I'm too, I'm too traumatized to go with you." She said, "They took rubber bullets out last time I went with you," and tear gas. We had to run to our car, because that's how the GRPD treats you when you come to speak up for other community members. It's been seven years, and I still don't have a family. My kid doesn't have a dad, and there was no videos released. And yes, I understand CDBG funding, but that has a lot to do with our peace and quiet in our community. It has a lot to do with violence. We don't need more policing. We need more dollars into our communities so people can have more opportunities. And we do need businesses that will pay livable wages and use those CDBG dollars for housing and mental health trauma care. I would love to see some funds earmarked for trauma care without having to involve police, along with, you know, black, you can't even have a neighborhood association without involving the police as part of your neighborhood association. So on my street, we don't have a neighborhood association, and we want to keep it that way, because the community members don't want to be forced to cooperate with police in order to, you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care of our neighborhood. But thank you.
Thank you. And if you want a full list of the programs that are being funded, recommended for funding, it is available. And a significant amount of the funding does go to community organizations and nonprofits. All right. Others who wish to be heard on this specific item about funding for, funding allocations for CDBG and home dollars?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner, City Manager, residents, and our law enforcement officials. I definitely, as Reginald Thomas, I apologize, with seeds of promise, and I would like to advocate to the gentlemen who were requesting another look at the budget amendment regarding workforce development. I was not necessarily prepared to speak on that, but I definitely felt compelled to support that particular position this evening. And I also just want to say, together we are better. I thank the very strong shore force by our local residents, our commissioners, and our law enforcement officials. Together we're better. Together we're better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Others who wish to be heard on these funding allocations? And Ms. Bohatch is still here, so if you have questions about some of the recommended recommendations, you're welcome to follow up with her directly. All right. That will take us to, I'm going to close that public hearing. That will take us to our next one. Our next public hearing is on programmatic agreements with the Michigan State Historic Preservation Officer. So Ms. Bohatch will start that again, and then if you're here to be heard on this item, you are welcome to come forward.
Okay. So this item is in regard to Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And through that act, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that local jurisdictions are responsible for certain, undertaking certain activities related to that. It's sort of, it's an unfunded mandate. And in doing that, we enter into agreements with the Michigan State Historic Preservation Officer that allows us more flexibility and allows us to get things approved by some local review rather than having to send everything directly to the state. And tonight's public hearing is seeking comments on those types of agreements, and in particular, the effect of activities on the character of historic properties. And we have two types of agreements. One is a non-ludhazard reduction activity agreement that is implemented for the use of funds from the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. The second one are, is an agreement for activities that are for ludhazard reduction, and that is specifically for, from funds that, through the Ludhazard Control Program, the Ludhazard Reduction Demonstration Program, as well as emergency, addressing emergency ludhazards funded with CDBG and home funds.
So if you're here tonight to be heard on this item, you are welcome to come forward. And again, same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. All right. Seeing none, we'll close that public comment period, and that will be referred back to our Community Development Committee. All right, Commissioners, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment. So this is public comment on any other item. Same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak.
You know my name because most of you see it while ignoring my written communication. I debated speaking tonight, but the issue of police abuse is what got me motivated as an activist originally. I decided to show my solidarity along those who have shown up tonight, because back down south, we have a phrase, "Dance with who brung ya." I would be remiss not to join in with these people. Anytime someone who looks like me can add our voice, it helps to remind leaders and onlookers that this is not just a black issue, it is an American issue, uniquely and sadly. People who look like me need to show up and express our support among people who do not look like us, because when it comes to murderous cops and corrupt cop culture, we all bleed at the hands of this latest manifestation of a broken profession, betraying the public trust over and over again, while leaders do little to nothing to change it. Early morning, April 4. That's a U2 lyric that keeps ringing in my head among all of this. Any killing of yet another young black man by police carries insurmountable shame, but on April 4, it carried an even heavier, sadder, coincidental darkness. More shameful has been the deafening silence from all of you. That's on par for some of you who flip-flopped on police issues all along, but it's a little more surprising from some others. And then we have Mr. Washington. There are calls for him to resign. I can't say they're wrong. He needs to locate his spine, boss up, and give orders to accelerate transparency or get out of the way. I don't know what twisted sense of decorum or professional courtesy makes many of you yield, but it's gutless to do so. I don't know if it's just the latest disgusting application of West Michigan nice or some other colloquial trash. Perhaps it's the convenient excuse of waiting for the state police to investigate, which is already as laughable as their comically enormous Barney Fife lights. Stop with the political convenience and the appeasement of police union thugs. Buck the system used to unfairly shelter cops from consequences the rest of us would have to deal with. Tomorrow is yet another day too late to cough up videos of this inexcusable execution. This officer has enjoyed anonymity and slow walking for far too long, and none of the rest of us get that treatment. I stand in support of the list of demands that's being circulated regarding this issue. I thank you for listening. Now do something. We've been patient enough.
Thank you. All right. Others wish to be heard?
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I'm a resident here in DR. This is crazy, because I came here and told you all that my cousin got killed by the state police in Chicago, Illinois. And just recently, I had to write a letter. His mother reached out to me, and she asked me to write a letter because she know I'm the one that's politically smart. I might not be politically correct, but I understand politics, and I understand how politics affect people of color and all people. And so my cousin's mom reached out to me, and she asked me to write a letter to the state and help her get resources, because my cousin hasn't got the light that all of these other people that deserve the same light and deserve the same justice for being killed by the police. The crazy thing is, is when we get, when black people kill each other, we always want to go slide for somebody or, you know, try to retaliate or give revenge for somebody killing our friend. But how do we give revenge on the police? You know what I'm saying? I'm not saying to seek revenge, but it's just, you know what I'm saying? This is crazy. I just want people to just understand, like, my family is really going through a lot. Like, my family got, my cousin got killed by the police, for real. And like, now I'm here in the city of GR, and you can go back on me, that's when I spoke, and I've spoke about these things, and I've asked the police chief about these things, and now these things happen to happen. And I just want y'all to be strong out here. You know what I'm saying? I need y'all to be unified. You know what I'm saying? Like, my family, I wish I could call my cousin and have her speak to y'all. Like, her son got killed, too. Like, that's my cousin. You know, that's my cousin. My blood cousin died by the hands of a police officer, but I'm still optimistic. I know every police officer isn't a bad officer, but it definitely needs to be changed. And I've never, ever talked about funding, but y'all need to do some funding. Y'all need to put some funding back in this community. I'm tired of seeing black people suffer. I'm tired of seeing the third war suffer. This is a very rich community with a lot of rich white people, and y'all need to really, why does it take people having to get killed for y'all to really have to do something? Y'all should have been did something. I've never said nothing to it, but that's just inexcusable. That's inexcusable. This is a very wealthy city. They talking about workforce development. They talking about job training. People want to see change. Y'all got an opportunity to change this city. It's a lot of black people on this commission. It's Caucasian people on this commission. It's people on this commission that care about the city, and y'all need to be transparent, and y'all need to hold, it's processes and procedures, and y'all need to hold these officers accountable to the highest extent, just how those officers and other officers will ride for their friends or their partner in duty, or a person in the army will ride for their friend who got killed at the line of duty. Y'all need to treat these people the same, regardless if you don't know them or not, because they're citizens of the city. You all have a, you all have a jurisdiction to follow under these laws, and so do these police officers. I appreciate it. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Others wish to be heard?
Yes, my name is Martha Cooper, Second Ward. I've been here in a long time. It was a long time ago I told you I wouldn't go away, because I came to this city hall on the regular to talk about housing. I was here for years. I want to share with you that maybe that was hard to hear a holler come up from the crowd, because we have watched you all looking at your phones and not paying attention. We have spent years before you speaking of things that nothing has happened. I came tonight because I couldn't stay home. I haven't been here because I've been hiding out from COVID with heart failure and breathing issues. You would refuse to open up the phone lines so that people like me could comment, because you don't want to hear the people in this room, much less be on the phone for several hours. But I understand most of you are part-time, and as far as I know, the meeting that was about defund the police went something like four hours. Well, that's still part-time. I want you guys acting like you are listening. And when I leave early after I speak, it's because my heart hurts. My heart hurts for the city. And I'm just talking about the health of my heart. But I'm not interested in what you have to say. You sit there and say nothing, and then when you do say something, nothing translates on the ground. So today, I am here for racist policing. That's why I am here. While I was here talking about housing, I saw all this money going to make our city a carnival, an attraction, instead of homes for people, citizens that vote for you. You're not representing us. I heard so many stories. I was here back when we were arguing about getting body cameras on cops. I was here when honesty was held at gunpoint. I was here when whether a month later, you had two eight-year-old boys walking backwards toward a cop with a gun. And you cannot tell me that in this America, eight-year-olds don't know that police shoot black people. We all know it. And it has finally happened here. It is almost a miracle it didn't happen before. I can tell you how many fines you have paid out for police brutality at traffic stops. I can tell you about profiling a Mexican-American veteran and almost having him deported and then paying big fines for that, but nothing happened to the officer that did it, absolutely nothing. So there is no accountability to any of these officers for their behavior. That's what I'm here to call out. You two especially.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you.
You are responsible for your lack of leadership.
Thank you. Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
My name is Timothy Crane, and I don't know what district I live in, 49525, or what ward, I mean. Look, man, absolute power corrupts absolutely. When you give the police power, absolute power, it's bound to turn corrupt. I mean, look at history, everything, man. Like, how many more people have to die? How many African-Americans at that? How many? You're not doing nothing. Police ain't getting charged. If that was me or anybody in this building, African-American or not, they would be getting charged. He needs to be charged. Tired of this shit. Excuse my language.
Yeah, please watch. We have little, little young people in the room.
Defund the police. That's what I got to say. Y'all foul, y'all wrong, and y'all dirty, straight up.
Thank you. All right. Others wish to be heard?
Good evening. Despite being someone who has been a vocal part of this community for several years now, speaking on police brutality and feeling akin to a canary in a mine, despite it all, I am still left feeling bereft, disgusted, and appalled at the recent atrocity carried out by the Grand Rapids Police Department that resulted in Patrick Leoya's death. I don't want any more puppy dog eyes from y'all or prayers. We want policy change. I am ashamed, and I am humiliated, the shame that this city, my only home, brought death to this young man who came here with dreams for a future. You too should be ashamed. You should be weeping. You should want to turn loose all associations with the city government, the sham of a city government, because you're supposed to preserve and improve the life of the residents of this place, and instead, the folks who are obligated and are under your responsibility allowed for the extinguishing of a life instead. You share the blame. The blood is on your hands, too. We never had to lose someone at all. Patrick Leoya was cut down in the prime of his life. I stand with the family of Patrick and demanding that the name of the officer who murdered their firstborn child be named publicly. There is no reason, well over a week after Patrick's death, we still don't know the name of the killer. Also, all police present at the scene are co-conspirators and should be named appropriately. All body and dash cam footage from every angle needs to be publicly released immediately without any editing. The city of Grand Rapids, the Kent County Keith, Kent County Chief Medical Examiner and GRPD must allow for external autopsy to be conducted at the express, at the express desire of the family. Everyone here, you should hang your heads in shame, especially you, Mayor, who voted in 2015 for $69,000 worth of military-grade rifles to be given to Grand Rapids Public, given to Grand Rapids Police Department rather than put in our schools to kill us. We warned you, and unfortunately, your arrogance, you charged away. This man had to pay with both his life. The least you can do is honor these commands. The least you can do is honor these demands. The same force that shot a man point-blank with a tear gas canister only two summers ago, you really thought this wasn't going to arrive on your doorstep, and we warned you, and you did not listen. You canceled call-in sessions for the voice of the community to be heard, because you would all rather turn your eyes and avert your gaze, you would rather work part-time to be able to walk away from the trauma and the travesty that you allow to occur under your leadership than remain committed to this community that you are all answering to. You should be ashamed of yourself. Mark Washington, you should be ashamed of yourself. I don't know how you sleep at night. I cannot sleep at night knowing that I took someone's father, son, brother, cousin, best friend, boyfriend, community member, churchgoer, away from them. Rest in power, Patrick Leoya. You were gone far too soon, and you need to act now.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Frida. I'm not necessarily an interpreter. I'm a community leader here for the African immigrants and refugees, and I am sick and tired of just us being as, you don't think we are here, but we are here. I've come here several times. I've talked about the African immigrants and refugees. We are here. We are not going anywhere. We are here because this is our home. You need to address us, talk to us. We need to talk to you, and we need that space created, because we are here by right. We are not here by mistake. We are not here by mistake. We came here, we, many of us as refugees and immigrants came to America for safety and this is exactly what happened. You took it away. You killed Patrick Leoya. That's just one thing that shouldn't have happened if you really listened to us. We have alerted every single day on the streets. Every single day the police, they hear our accent. They hear that we may need an interpreter. They assume they can go extra miles and violate the African immigrants beyond the racism that we face. We also face other barriers. We are hurt and we have, as I said, I think you need to create a space to understand this town is not the, the way it was several years ago. We are so many of us here and we need to know that the policies are being put in place. I remember I spoke to Honorable Senator and I asked what policies have been changed to make sure that this city is ready for the African immigrants, for the African refugees, for the brown and black immigrants who are here. So I didn't have to be an interpreter tonight. That should already be factored in that we are here. We need to see change and Patrick Leoya, a community member of mine and people we talk about all the time, was killed. But if he wasn't killed, he would have been violated and gone back home and been quiet. I've been violated and I need to speak up. Other people in my community didn't, don't speak up. Africans, we are, people want peace. We want just to be able to provide for our families, go to school, work hard, be directors, do the best things we can do in this city. I do the best I can to make this city wonderful. I do so much for Grand Rapids and I want you to do the same for my community. I want you to hear as I call you Honorable Washington, I call you Mayor Bliss. I want my community addressed immediately. I want you to call, make a press specifically for that community to talk to us and make sure you know we are here. We are staying and we need to be factored in, in everything you plan to do. So I just ask you because we don't need to wait for another tragedy to happen so that you can hear us. Please make that change. And as I said, we are very polite. I don't want to be representing them incorrectly, but we care for peace. We want justice for Patrick the most peaceful way because that's what African immigrants and refugees believe in. But also we don't want to be intimidated that we cannot speak our rights. We want to know our rights and we want to be looked at like any other person in this room. So as a community leader in that population and in this place, and I make everything I can do to make this right in this town, please make sure you do the same for us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nikita Minor, a resident of the Third Ward. I'm here and Patrick is not. We don't care about y'all's timeline. Why hasn't his family seen his body? What are y'all hiding? We are not going to sit idly by where y'all scramble to come up with excuses. We activists have been trying to tell you that GR is no different from Ferguson, Minneapolis, Detroit, or Chicago. Police have too much power and it's extrajudicial and it's illegitimate. Where is the accountability? The power needs to be with the people and y'all commissioners, mayor, mayor and city manager cannot speak for all the people of Grand Rapids because I don't feel like y'all are listening. I will say that I don't feel like y'all are listening. Okay? Because when Mike Brown was killed in the street, we in Grand Rapids took to the streets to remind our city that Black Lives Matter. An officer smugly asked me and my friends at Rosa Parks Circle, why this, why this person? Why? Why would you march for Mike Brown? We all know what that means. Why would you march for this N-word? Why would you march for Mike Brown? He said, he said this like Mike didn't have a family, friends, and community. These are the kind of people that are tasked with protecting and serving us, people who don't believe that we are human. So listen to us because we are speaking and thank you to the citizens of this city for showing out today.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Stacy Nichols. I am a resident of Grand Rapids. From a child, we know that before we can speak, we model what we see. In this meeting tonight and at large in the community, we see one thing in our acts to do opposite. Psychologically, it makes no sense to me. However, we are treated as if we are children, as if we know better, as if government is to be our parents. It's reminiscent of slavery and the police and local government want to hold tight on to the power that they get from titles and that they have with guns and it's say as, do as I say, not as I do. However, when the people come out and speak up and want to, you know, express themselves and their authenticity, we have to respect the processes and systems that are set in place, but none of those protect the people. The real power is with the people. One day, hopefully sooner than later, we will learn that. When a family from the Democratic Republic of Congo comes to Grand Rapids, Michigan and say they don't feel safe, you have to think twice about that. Everything that has happened up to this point as a result of the death of Patrick Leoya by the hands of the Grand Rapids Police Department, we all can agree we don't like how it's been handled. The world will be watching. Everything that happens after this could be a step in the right direction to prevent this. If not, expect it to happen again because no one is training the police not to do what they have historically done. I can't understand how classes of officers continue to come into a system and continue to do the very thing that they did when they were the slave patrol protecting property and saw black people as less than and continue to do that. Let's evolve, please, sooner than later. I don't understand why people have to lose their lives, but until it happens to you, you really might not understand. We don't want that. We don't want discord in our communities. We don't want families to mourn. We don't want people to come to the greatest nation into cities like Grand Rapids, Michigan that we've all worked so hard to create, to be better and to be a model city to have things like this happen. We're behaving as a third world nation when you feel like your power comes from a title and a gun. Use your minds, use your hearts. Let's really exercise humanity and do what is just and fair today going forward so we can be that model city and be the change that we wish to see. Please and thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Ally and I'm the Chairwoman of the Royal Black Panther Party of Grand Rapids. I stand before you all today to address the tragedy and overall miscarriage of justice that is the murder of Patrick Leoya. I first want to say one thing. We told you so. So many local activists like myself came into these meetings injured, traumatized, and brutalized by the Grand Rapids Police Department, warning you of the realities of ignoring police violence. Back in September, I stood before you all and asked you how far you were willing to let this go and apparently allowing the Grand Rapids Police Department to beat peaceful protesters in the middle of art price wasn't far enough. To say I'm sick to my stomach is an understatement and I believe I speak for all of us local activists when I say you are all as equally responsible for Patrick's death as the police department. And for you, Mayor Bliss, to ask us to trust the process is shameful because all you care about is your image. When we, when are you going to wake up and realize we don't trust any of y'all? And we don't trust the process either, especially given the fact that we've been lied to this entire process. History has shown us time and time again that all police killings start the same way with the police department that has a history of violence that they have not been held accountable for, for which once again, we have told you this. And for you all to gaslight us and dismiss us as disrespectful children, just the smile in the faces of Patrick's family sharing condolences and sympathy is disgusting and downright disingenuous. You didn't care about Patrick's life because if you did, you would have fought to improve the conditions of the police department when we came to you with countless stories of their violence, but you didn't. You should all be ashamed and I hope you were having just as hard of a time sleeping at night as most of us are right now because you failed Patrick Leoya and for that you owe his family an apology. Patrick's life mattered. Him and his family came here for safety just for his life to end for absolutely no reason, execution style at that. I'm demanding that you not only release the dash cam footage of Patrick's murder, but to release the name of his murderer as well. It has been over 72 hours. Why is this city protecting a murderer when if I committed the same crime, would TVA would be so quick to post my mugshot? No police officer is above the law. We need full transparency of this case immediately and overall, we need justice for Patrick. I need you to all understand the severity of the situation. We have made international news in the past for the wrong reasons, for the same reason why we're making international news now, but now it's worse. A life was lost. Patrick's life was lost and it didn't need to happen. We have told you exactly what was going to happen and you didn't believe us. You should all be ashamed. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
I'm Nico. I live in Grand Rapids. Firstly, Rosalyn, um, you used to work at a center for troubled youth residential home. You earned the trust of the community. Those people that you was watching when you was working there, they remember you. They was voting for you. They, they thought you was gonna protect them and you didn't and that's disheartening. And honestly, all y'all knew what was gonna happen. Y'all ignored it because you, it seems like you just did not care. Y'all didn't care because some of y'all, the people that was affected don't look like you. Some of y'all don't care because money talk louder than what, what is right, doing what is right. I mean, Patrick cannot get his life back. But there's countless clips of many people coming up here saying that if you do not make GRPD take responsibility for them being violent towards peaceful community members, that somebody was gonna lose their life. Y'all sat up here looking just as unbothered as you do right now back then and for y'all to sit up in a church, the church out of all places and act like you did everything you could do to say you put all the policies in place to protect black people, you know you a liar and that's not okay. That's not okay. I feel like your integrity should not have allowed you to sit next to Patrick's family at all. That is so trifling. Y'all need to do better. Y'all need to make these policies more stern on these police because people should not have to die after die after die, life after life after life for y'all to sit up there with these crocodile tears and act like you care. If you cared, the policies would be changed. If y'all cared, the police would pay for their own insurance. Ain't no way the citizens should have to be paying when the police kill a community member. That is ridiculous. Ridiculous. And I believe that for black men, black little boys, they look up to black men. They look up to black men to protect them, to teach them, to lead them. And that's not what y'all been doing and that's not okay. These people cannot get their lives back. People being injured and y'all knew that and y'all ain't do nothing. I'm disappointed in you, you, and you.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Dana Montgomery. I live in the Second Ward of Grand Rapids, Michigan. Um, y'all have not listened to us when we have talked to you as public officials, so I'm gonna just talk to you as human beings. Mindy, I know you know me. You may act, you may try to ignore me now because you can't even look me in the face after we've had conversations before for what you've done, but I know you know me. Kurt, I know that we had a conversation in 2020 after George Floyd's death and you talked to me about what you could do better. Don't act like you didn't. Sanita, I know we've been in meetings together. I know we have seen each other and we have been in the same community spaces. Rosalyn, I know that you're a social worker and you're supposed to be held to a certain code of conduct. Anita, I know that you are a black woman. I know that you are a black woman and I'm not even gonna go there. Mark Washington, you're not even elected by the people. You're just here for a paycheck that keeps rising and rising. I know you have two young sons and I don't even know how you sit here right now. John O'Connor, your bootlicker not even gonna mess with you right now. Joe Jones, I know you know my dad. I know you know my family. I know that we have been in the same spaces. I know your kids. Nate Moody, I know your family. I know that you own a funeral home here and I don't know how any of y'all can sit here conscientious, consciously and not be thoroughly disgusted with yourselves. Patrick Leoya was 26 years old. He was a father to two young daughters. He was a sibling. He was a sibling to five younger siblings. He was the oldest. He was a friend. He was a friend to many and people who are sitting here right now. And how can y'all sit here stoically when a man lost his life? And at the end of the day, all that other stuff doesn't matter, but what matters is that Patrick is not here. He is no longer here with us because of your incompetence, because I don't even know how you can, you can stomach it. I really can't because Patrick should still be here. There's so many people who are traumatized. I can't eat. I can't sleep. Patrick was my friend's brother. I can't eat. I can't sleep. So many of us can't and I, I can't even imagine what the family's going through. So because there is no justice for Patrick Leoya because justice would be if he was still here, but I do believe we should support the family's demands, which are to release all body camera and dash camera footage of all of the involved officers immediately, naming the, the name of the cop who was involved immediately, letting an external autopsy be performed. And at the end of the day, the other thing I want is for all y'all to resign immediately because I don't know how you can sit here conscientious, consciously and you let that man die. His blood is on your hands. Two girls do not have a father because of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Taylor Ellison, Third World. So when the police pull up behind you, have you noticed that your heart's beat? That's fear because you live in a police state. So when we talk about police reform and we talk about changing policy, I want you to be mindful of the fact that police reform means making the police more effective, making the police better at killing us. So we don't need police reform. We need accountability and we need real change. And it's not Eric Winstrom. It's not community policing. Okay? You guys failed. It didn't work. Look at me when I'm talking to you, please. Because a week ago, the National Forum of Black Public Administrators were here and I volunteered at that whole event and it was understaffed the whole time. And Mark Washington, you know this because I took a picture with you and I was proud and now I feel like an idiot. I'm ashamed of myself because I put myself out there for this community over and over again, only for you to continue to ignore our calls for justice. Why is that? Do you not care? Are you so comfortable in those seats, in your positions when you go home at night that you can really look at yourselves in the mirror and feel like what you're doing is right? It's been a week. It takes that long to redact footage? This is the world star generation. We've looked at unredacted footage before. We can handle it. We know what happened. We know he's dead. There is no reason that he is dead other than the fact that he was executed by your police in these streets. So I ask you, stop playing games with us. Release the footage. It doesn't take that long to edit. I have a fucking, excuse me, a 12-year-old nephew that can edit that footage for you if you need the help. Okay? You have people, you have staffs that work for you that can edit the footage. So what's the holdup? And I'll tell you what it is. It's time. Time works to their favor. You, you're getting time to control the narrative while we wait to find out what happened. Talking about a traffic stop, it probably wasn't a traffic stop. Okay? But you let, you let that, that tone set, you try to frame the issue and time gets away from us. Our rage gets away from us. It's not going away this time. Release the footage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Hakob, not Jacob Israda. I'm a Grand Rapids native. I've been here my entire life. I'm a first-generation resident. Most of the time I'm proud of my city, but I come here ashamed, humiliated, and disappointed. I wore these colors today because these are the same colors that were spilled on the blood on the street. And a far too story that we all know too well. On a far too story that we all know too well. The way I think about it, I am the rose that grew from the concrete of the oppressive system that you've placed on us. I'm a first-generation college student. I went to GRCC. I transferred to MSU for criminal justice and I'm very proud to see that you guys are the action of what made me who I am today and I'm proud of that. So when I'm in my classes of policing and multicultural justice and I'm seeing that, wow, these are horrible examples of policing that's going down, I'm so glad, I'm proud of my city and my city's not like that. I come back that very same weekend to hear the news about Patrick. And I'm shocked and I'm awed and that's where it hit me. My city is no different than Detroit, than Ferguson, than all those other cities that happened. And it makes me think, when are we gonna learn our lesson? Was it two years ago during the protests of George Floyd? I'm a Latino and I come here because I feel so encouraged by my community members to hope of that it's not me on the street, that it's not my kids, that it's not my kids' kids, that it's not my brother or my sister or my dad or my mom. And that's a horrible thought to have, that I can't even go outside and use my degree for something without worrying about getting pulled over and shot execution-style on the ground with my head like this? For what reason? Am I a threat to you? So I choose to educate myself. I choose to educate myself to hope that people like you aren't in power. And I hope to educate myself with the funding that you give to people like me, to everyone, so that we can all find a solution that the ones that you are giving us aren't provided So I ask you all, why? Why does it take this long to ensure that these mistakes don't happen again? Do we need another one? Does it need to be me next? Do I have to take my day and missing exam over to come here to represent my city? There has been many controversy in regards to GRPD and their inhumane methods. We all learn from experiences. So why haven't you guys? Why hasn't GRPD? Why haven't they been able to handle accountable? Why would you release unedited footage or edited footage, excuse me? And as much as that took in this long, and look what's happened. All of us coming together in unison and for one point that that's not a good thing. I thank you for your time, but I do not thank you for your service.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
My name is Alexis and I've lived in Grand Rapids for 10 years. I wanna say I can't believe that this has happened here, but honestly, I've lived at the corner of Michigan and Monroe and I've lived at the corner of Madison and Hall. And I know everybody here knows where I saw more cops and where I felt like I needed to go out and watch their actions to make sure that the people in my community weren't brutalized. And so I'm not surprised and I know none of these people are either and you guys shouldn't be. Activists, citizens, and people of color have been saying for years that this was going to happen. It was not a matter of if GRPD was going to kill somebody, but it was when. If a system that allows them to over-police and brutalize black and brown communities continued, this was going to happen and you all let it happen. People have come to your meetings month after month since the murder of George Floyd and still here we are. And you all should be ashamed of yourselves. Because some of Patrick's blood is on your hands too. Every single one of you, even the ones not looking at me right now. Your condolences, your moments of silence, thoughts and prayers, they don't mean anything when you sit by and let the system that killed Patrick continue every single day, where we have seen brutality in the days, the week that has passed since Patrick was murdered. So the very least you all could do is give full transparency in this case. You should release his name and full unedited footage. They don't deserve the protection. Patrick didn't get that protection. So there's a call for Mark Washington's resignation, but if all of you can't handle making a priority to ensure not only is there justice for Patrick, but that this doesn't happen in our community ever again, every single one of you should resign. That's it.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Jose. I live in the city of Grand Rapids. I'm not just speaking for myself, but I'm speaking on behalf of my students as well. I am an educator in the city and I work with many African immigrant families, students whose lives could be taken at any moment, as we just saw last week. I would like to thank all the community activists and organizers present and here in spirit for continuing to fight for justice. It's shameful that while many ordinary citizens speak up and speak out, the elected officials who are supposed to represent us have failed to do so. Instead, you continue to uphold the white supremacist values that have plagued our country since its inception. And yes, I'm talking to all the black and brown folks too on the commission. The system of policing incarceration in this country of always and will continue to target and oppress and even murder people of color, the poor and the historically excluded unless we stand up and speak out against such systems. That's why I'm here today and that's why along with my community, we're demanding justice for Patrick Leoya and justice for his family. And while many have accepted performative moments of silence and thoughts and prayers, let me remind you, God don't like ugly. And while God does not have the power to dismantle the system that caused a young man to lose his life, you do.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Amanda Bernas. I'm born and raised Grand Rapidsian. And this isn't the Grand Rapids I know. This isn't what I recognize as a city. In fact, the first time that we made international news, I was in what used to be a third-world country. And right now, that doesn't seem too far off from what we have. I saw the footage in that country. I saw bombs. What I saw were bombs going off in 2020. And I couldn't be here to say anything or do anything. All I could do was be in that other country, watching what felt like terror, sheer terror. That's not Grand Rapids. And then eventually, the footage cut out and I can just, and all I could do is sit there and mourn for the place that I grew up in. The home, my home. This is my home. And it's going to continue to be my home and I'm going to be here to support the citizens and the children that are growing up here. I'm a social worker and I teach in the schools and I care about Grand Rapids and about our nation. I don't want to see us suffer the way I've seen others suffer in other nations. I went to Buenos Aires when I was in grad school and I remember learning about madres de los desaparecidos. And those mothers walk every two weeks or so for their children who are abducted by the people who are in positions of power, who gained too much power, who were not checked by the community. Thank goodness, we have a community here with the ability to speak up about what's going on. Because if we weren't here, things can get worse. I've seen them get worse. They are worse. They have been worse. All you need to do is look at our history in the United States, across the world. I don't need to give a history lesson here. I'm asking you to do what's needed in order to create the world that you are here to create, the world, the community that we need. We need support in this community. There are places that are suffering more than others. They should not be suffering that bad. This can get worse. Keep that in mind. If you think, and if you think for one minute that you're immune, you're not. At any given moment, this could happen to you too. So I'm asking that something be done. I'm asking for you to do something and act now before it gets worse, because it can get worse.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
I'd like to thank Amanda, but unfortunately, this is the Grand Rapids I know. This is not uncommon and this is not, unfortunately, something that hasn't been on our radar. So my name is Megan. I was born and raised here in Grand Rapids. I went to Unity Christian. I went to Calvin University. I grew up in the same West Michigan, white majority, Christian bubble, very similar to the elected officials and the GRPD officers that are supposed to serve and protect. I know our community and this community very intimately. And so I know that you are concerned with preserving the identity that holds the West Michigan community together. But let us be clear about what this identity means, white supremacy. And what I've still failed to understand is why so many people in positions of power continue to uphold this status quo of white supremacy. Why you don't espouse the Christian values so many of you hold dear. Why you don't seek justice by naming and arresting the officer who murdered Patrick with a bullet to his head and a knee to his back. Why you don't show mercy in the name of Patrick's family by providing the full transparency in the process of this case. And why you don't walk humbly by admitting mistakes, taking responsibility for the harm that was done to the black community and seeking the change that is so desperately needed. And Mayor Bliss, I'd like to address you, social worker to social worker. I'd like to remind you of the NASW Code of Ethics that you took to oath during your MSW at Michigan State. And I would like you to revisit that and truly ask you if you think you are espousing those ethics right now. I would like for you to look throughout our community and the barricaded GRPD police right now and I would like to know how that is upholding the ethics. Are you truly seeking social justice and police reform like the code has called us to do as social workers? If not, what are we all doing here? I'm not here pleading with you to take action. I'm expecting it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Liv. Sorry. My thoughts are so scattered right now, I apologize. I guess just first of all, just name the murderer. Like why, why is this a question? And don't just name him. Name him, arrest him, convict him, lock him up, throw away the key. I'm gonna keep this pretty short, because I know like there's so many people who wanna Defund GRPD, community control of the police. Just as a quick aside, what is this thing about like, oh, we have to pray for the cop? Like, no, he killed somebody. Do you wanna pray for John Wayne Gacy too? Like what is this? It's such a joke. Anyways, I'm gonna yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Sam. I live in the city. I'm here in solidarity with all these protesters. I would like to echo Liv, arrest the killer cop, release the video, release the name. I guarantee you, if the people had control of the police, if the people were able to hire and fire the police, if the people were able to arrest the police, this stuff would have been out right when it happened. But there's no accountability. So, you know, people witnessed the George Floyd uprisings, but what's changed since then? Like this stuff's gonna keep happening. The people have to take power into their own hands and strip the police of their power. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Betsy Lopez Wagner. I live in Kent County. I just wanna note that 30 individuals have given y'all more than what you have given us. We've given you our names. Our names. We wanna know the name of the killer. I'll say this. I'm here to elevate my voice for change. I acknowledge I have the privilege of using my voice tonight and act so ordinary that Patrick Leoya's family cannot have or hear from him again in that same respect. Because why? Because of a member of this city's police department. In the words of Ruby Bridges, racism is a grown-up disease. In the words of Maya Angelou, love recognizes no barriers. It jumps hurdles, leaps fences, penetrates walls to arrive at its destination full of hope. In the words of Bell Hooks, there can be no love without justice. No love without justice for a grown-up disease. City Manager Washington, it is remarkable that you spoke before us tonight to express a desire for healing and for moving forward, days just after alive was lost because of killing. Within the stages of healing, if y'all are not familiar, there's inflammation, there is pain, there is anger, and something y'all need to really take to heart, reconstruction. The oppressive system that created this environment for this killing must be disrupted. And if you aren't familiar with the brilliant black women whom I quoted, I'll share in the words of the Department of Homeland Security. White supremacists are our nation's greatest terror threat. Violent extremism internally and externally. And it's time for justice. It's time to safeguard this city and this region from the disease, the public health crisis that is racism, white supremacy breeding in an environment where public servants kill. Being black, being brown, being a person of color is not a crime nor a death sentence. Those sworn to protect and to serve are not the jury and the executioner. We need to be better. We need to do better and it starts tonight.
Thank you.
I am Jessica. I am a citizen of Grand Rapids. This is my first time speaking at something like this and I've been watching each and every one of you if I've been standing in the line. Melinda, you haven't paid attention to a single person standing up here. You've been writing a letter the entire time. Mark, you've been yawning, yawning, yawning. John, chomping your gum. I'm so disappointed as a small business owner of this city and how you guys are responding to people who are disgusted with our police department. Last summer, I traveled to Minneapolis, which was after the George Floyd protests and it changed the face of that city forever. And I guarantee this situation will change the face of Grand Rapids forever. So you might wanna think that $183 million amphitheater investment downtown, it might just not be a good idea right now. I'm disgusted. I'm also here as a mother. I am outraged and disgusted. I listened to Patrick's mother outcry in pain for her son, a feeling no mother should ever have to feel. And it made me feel that feeling I felt when I learned that George Floyd was calling out for his mother in his final breath. How does that make you feel if you are a mother sitting up there? Because it's disgusted me to the point I can't sleep all week, to the point my six-year-old son knows to never trust a cop. We talk about that in my household. He will never respect a police officer. Eric, I hope you're listening. Oh, no, you're not. You're on your phone back there. Way to go, bro. Logically, we know the police officer murdered Patrick. It reminds me of the situation. I'm in my kitchen cooking. My son's quiet. Oh, let me go see what he's doing. Go upstairs, he's coloring on the wall. Same situation. Birds chirping, you guys are quiet. So what are you up to? Up to no good. Blurring the video, editing the video, doing what you need to do to make sure that it fits your narrative and it's disgusting. And as a black man and black woman, you should be disgusted for even thinking that it's I stand before you demanding the officer's name. We already know tomorrow at 3 o'clock, we're gonna get the video footage, right Eric? Let's make sure it's not blurred out and we can see it clearly. Blood is on your hands and I don't wanna hear anything about Patrick's criminal history because it doesn't mean shit. Give us justice for Patrick now.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? All right. All right.
My name is Suzanne Vanderpij and I am a resident of Grand Rapids. About a month ago, I was talking to a friend of mine who is an African immigrant to Grand Rapids and he told me how much he loved this country. Because where he came from, he watched people get killed in the streets. And now that's happening here. For years, folks have been coming up here warning you about the GRPD. They have repeatedly traumatized and perpetrated violence against citizens of this community. You have seen it with your own eyes, yet you all sit here and do nothing. You talk about remaining peaceful at protests and in the last year and a half, the only violence I've seen at protests is from the GRPD. The best you can offer us is a suggestion to become cops ourselves. And now here we are. A man is dead at the hands of the GRPD. Patrick Leoya was executed by the violent racist police who you refuse to do nothing about. And again, you all do nothing and say nothing. Shame on all of you. You are all complicit and you all have blood on your hands. That being said, I'd like to uplift the wishes of Patrick's family for all body and dashboard camera footage to be publicly released, unedited. camera footage to be publicly released unedited immediately. This includes the officer who killed Patrick and any other, releasing the name of the officer who killed Patrick and any other officers who were at the scene of the murder. The city of Grand Rapids, the Kent County Chief Medical Examiner, and the GRPD must allow an external autopsy to be conducted. Additionally, I'd like to call for the resignation of City Manager Mark Washington, who oversees the GRPD. Clearly, you do not have any interest in protecting all citizens of this community. You allow the police to act with impunity and without accountability. You're allowing the man who murdered Patrick Loyah to sit at home behind his police union and prepare a story and a defense while the GRPD tries to blame the victim. You work for us, all of us, not just the DeVosses and the Vianandals and the Meyers and the Lacks. Patrick was a father, a brother, a son, a friend, and a member of this community, and he deserved more. And you all and the GRPD took that from him.
Hi, my name is Cindy Hicks again, and I just wanted to talk to you about the fact that I met Patrick. He was a friend of my tenants. I had Congolese tenants from Bethany Christian Services placed in my rental. And Patrick, by the way, was not a gangbanger, and even if he was, he doesn't deserve bullets in the back of his head. I'm really disgusted at the policies, simply because I feel like I've given my whole adult life to just wanting better and wanting empowerment for people in the community. Like, they just deserve an opportunity to live their best life without being beat or maimed or murdered. Like, my kid and other kids like her shouldn't be afraid of police. We don't want any more tables at community events. Our kids don't want to go. They don't want to play ball, they don't want to do activities, they don't want to see cops riding bikes by their house, okay? That sends our kids into anxiety attacks. We need a trauma center. We don't need your friends, Monica and Jessica, who haven't showed up, county commissioners, not showing up for what's important for the Black community, okay? All they want to do is make a buck and pay people slave wages of 10 bucks an hour. And I helped recruit people to work for their business, okay? And I gave nine months of my time for free because I believe in building up Black businesses, okay? But I helped build up the wrong ones. But we don't need something with a liquor license in our backyards in an unstable neighborhood that's gonna draw police, that's gonna draw police and their guns. And when Monica and Jessica have their rich friends, you know, doing political fundraisers, who do you think's gonna go to jail when the police get called? Is it gonna be the wealthy friends, or is it gonna be the people providing party favors for the wealthy friends? I mean, who has not even sat down and thought about that? I'm just, like, sickened. And Mr. Washington, you know, telling neighbors that we can't even appeal zoning decisions that are hurting people, that are gonna draw police, and police weren't even, no one even inquired? You're gonna give someone a liquor license without even calling the very people that you're gonna call and use for resources? I mean, the dirty, underhanded business favors going on are not anything that's helping community members. We need a trauma center, not a place serving crappy food with slave wages. Like, please, justice for Patrick and the nine people that have felonies. You need to stop the criminal charges on activists.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
So I don't know if you remember what happened on March 9th, 2021. That was the night of a city commission meeting, the night after GRPD brutally arrested eight protesters on Breonna Taylor Way, the street you performatively named for her. I'm going to play for everyone the one time anyone on this council responded to protesters in the last year and a half after they were being beaten. So let's see here.
...their job last night. Social justice for Black lives probably do have some concerns, but at the same time, our laws and regulations should be enforced. And I want to make it very clear right now to all those who are listening, I will not be voting to defund the Grand Rapids Police Department. So you can save some of your emails and calling me and asking me to do so, that's not gonna happen. Secondly, I do not believe that social justice for Black lives has done everything that they claim they have done. If they've done a lot of stuff in the community, then social justice for Black lives, why didn't you come forward and protest the 38 shootings that took place in 2020? That was a travesty within our community. I understand that George Floyd died at the hands of the police in Minneapolis, so one officer, but that is not the Grand Rapids PD. Now, I do believe that in the past, in terms of my work in this community, I'm a resident of this community, been in this community for over 65 years, and I'm sure I've done more work in this community than any of you in any period of time. I welcome conversations from you all. I welcome a conversation, not anything negative, but positive conversation. So if you want to talk positive with me, give me some insight on what plans you have. If it was up to me, I would tell the mayor, city manager, and the police chief, whom I have the greatest respect for, not to respond to you. That's welcome.
And that's exactly what you did, all of you, isn't it? That was the only time you spoke to us in the last year and a half that people were coming to every single one of these meetings to ask you, when are you gonna stop the GRPD from beating people, from pulling guns on people in McDonald's parking lots, from pulling guns on children as they walk home from basketball courts? You are all pathetic. Patrick's blood is on your hands, and I sincerely hope that you can't sleep at night just like the rest of us who fought to prevent this. You are pathetic excuses for public servants. Your ambitions for political advancement clearly outweigh any duty you feel to protect the people of Grand Rapids. You will never be Governor Rosalynn. Rosalynn quit trying to act like you did something by creating a powerless, toothless, reliant-on-the-police-for-their-information Office of Oversight and Public Accountability that does nothing more than performance. Justice for Patrick.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Dayton. I'm gonna take up all three minutes I have, because personally, I'd like to think that all of you here should be here as long as we can keep you. If you guys are here till 2:00 AM, great, maybe it'll teach you something. I'd like to start off with expressing the unfortunate reality that we live in here in the United States. Since 2019, over 1,000 people have been killed each year at the hands of police. That is not normal. That is something attuned to authoritarian dictatorships in countries. Most other developed nations of the world, the number is, well, in single digits. In England, the number is around three per year. That's 60 times more than the United States. That is terrible. There is no excuse for the amount of times police kill people here in the United States. And Grand Rapids, as recent events have proved, is a part of that narrative. I've been among many people who have experienced violence and aggressive behavior, been a direct witness, seen video footage, and I've heard many stories of violent and aggressive behavior from the Grand Rapids Police Department, and we have all warned you that this would happen. Every single one of us activists that you have all seen before, you have seen my face before, and you've seen the faces of many of the other people coming up here today. Walking down the city, the city of Grand Rapids and the police department are setting up fences, preparing for violence. I think that's a lot of the issue here. The Grand Rapids Police Department trains for violence, they prepare for violence, they perpetrate violence. And we see it again and again and again, and it's continued, it has not stopped, and it has not slowed down. And every time we say something, there's some excuse. Oh, the police were enforcing laws, they were following training, they were keeping in practice with their policies. Well, I'm gonna state the obvious that we probably shouldn't have to state, but we do anyway. Those policies, those laws, the police training needs to be overhauled, not just a little tweak, but overhauled. Because as I said, 1,000 people per year are killed by police in the United States of America. That is not a problem that can be solved with a few minor tweaks that happen slowly over time. No, everything needs, we need to start from scratch. Abolish the police as we know them and come up with a new form of law enforcement. Because the one that we have now does not work, and it does more harm than it does good. And I've run out of things to say, and I'm gonna hold the rest of my seconds because I want you guys to revel in this and be here all night. Because we will be too.
Let's fill that with applause.
Justice for Patrick.
Thank you.
Man, you guys really look like you don't want to be here. Well, we don't either. You know, we got jobs, we got shit to do, but we have to fight for our community members to live their lives, you know? I didn't say my name, but my name doesn't matter. The only name that we need to hear tonight is the murderer that killed Patrick. And, you know, you guys always look bored, tired all the time. You've heard us say that before because we're watching you do it. Well, you guys should be taking notes, because if you actually gave a shit about the community, you would be as riled up as the rest of us about this. But you don't. You're sitting there giving your fake smiles, and, you know, you're probably tired, you want to go home. Well, Patrick can't go home. We can't go home right now. If you guys really cared, you should all resign and come join us in the street where change actually happens. Take some notes from the community members, because you work for us. You know, and I don't do something right at my job, my boss tells us. Well, we're the closest thing that you have to a boss, so take some notes, or you're gonna lose your job. Which you should. You should. You know, there's so many things to say, and you're gonna hear it all tonight. We're gonna keep telling you, we're gonna keep reiterating. And, you know, if you don't listen up, we're just gonna keep coming back and coming back and coming back, because we've been doing this this whole time. You know, I'm losing track, there's a lot of emotions, you know? You know? I'm just gonna keep holding time, just like Dayton, it's like everybody else here. I'm shaking right now, like, you know? I'm not the only one shaking. We're pissed, we're not disappointed, we weren't expecting anything better from any of you. You know? Pay attention to your community. Show up. Be here. Look at me when I'm talking to you. Look at everybody. You know, there's so many beautiful speakers here tonight, and there's power behind their voice. There's zero power behind any of your voices because you have no convictions, you don't care about anything. These people care about things. They care about their community, we are the community. And, you know, throwing more money at the police department isn't working. I don't know why you guys keep doing it. You know, it's some, what, like, 50 million, 40-something million of the budget? Going to the cops, doing what? Murdering our community members? 45 million, thank you. And not only the people that are murdered, the people whose lives are ruined, who have to, like, suffer through fines and court dates and anything like that, those people's lives are ruined too. You know, this isn't just about death, but it's, you know? I mean, end of my time.
Thanks. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mariah Arnold, and I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm originally from Lansing. I come to you as a social work graduate student at a local university. On July 26th of last year, I came to a commission meeting and asked you all that are sitting here to actively listen to the young activists that continue to show up, that were demonstrating in the streets, and that were advocating for change. The feedback many of you provided to them was often dismissive, or you were sitting there on your phones, or you were looking down the entire time. There's video footage of all of that. It is now April 2022, and here we are again. A loss of life has happened in our backyards. I'm sorry, your backyard as well, specifically. I'm sure many of you never assumed an event like this would have happened, but now that it has, I'm going to ask you again to sit here and actively listen to the community members that you serve. I'm standing in solidarity with Patrick's family to not only demand justice, but to demand the release of the officer's name and to demand continued transparency as we, the community members, are owed. Patrick's story has now reached the eyes and ears of many outside our city limits. Many of us are watching, and in this room, we have not forgotten the varying actions that you guys have not taken over the past couple of years and still probably will continue not to take. You now have the opportunity to provide solutions to your community members. So I just want to end with one question. What are we going to do now that the world is watching us? We have made national news, we are on blog sites, we are talking about it amongst each other as a community. What are we going to do? We need to step up. You need to step up specifically and do your jobs. That's what we expect of you. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Curtis. I am a member of the Nation of Islam, the chief aide, and I have permission to speak through the Honorable Elijah Muhammad on his behalf and the community of our Black people. I have no respect for none of the GRPD's officers here. But yet, you say that everybody here is racially balanced, you say they're racially balanced, but yet you have a Black officer in his corner and a white officer in that corner, just to make it look like it's good. It's off the game, so we need to stop this. Mayor, I don't know what is going on in your city. I don't know what is going on. These officers really, really, really need to be counseled, need to be educated a little bit more, they need to go back to training. I used to work here at the city of Grand Rapids, the Information Technology Department for six years. My uncle, James Ferris, was the deputy chief of police department, yet none of this, none of this had never happened on his watch. I can't even recall that it was a Black man killed. The police community was, the cities, the citizens of this community was very fond of him, and he stepped down for a separate reason because they chose not to let him be the chief of police. I don't understand the officer, why he did that, but I can guarantee you that the officer should be put to shame, he needs to be put in jail, the keys need to be thrown away. He needs to pay for those people's funeral. The city has to pay for that. I do not have no respect, and never will I ever, ever, ever look another officer in his face and say, "Thank you for your service," because the service that you're providing is nothing. And if the officer was to get killed to this day, I would spit on his grave. I have no respect for the officer. The officer needs to go, he needs to go. Because at the end of the day, the city is gonna turn up the heat. If nothing's gonna be done, it's gonna be another crisis here. Trust and believe that. And this is a beautiful city. We do not, we do not want to see that go down like that again. Because we don't want to destroy the community that we love, but the officers are destroying the community that we love. How do you feel like each time you walk down the street, an officer is saying, "Hey, where you going? Let me see your ID." For what? Why are you stopping me for? That is not right. That is not right at all. I should be able to walk down the street, pulling me over, and, "Oh, you're probably a gangbanger. Oh, what street you stay on? Mad? I have streets, you stay on Lafayette Love Street." That is not about who I am. I am a human being, and it's as each and every single one of you are. And we pray, and I pray to God, because at the end of the day, God's gonna take care of him. God is surely gonna put him to death. When another man takes another man's life, God is gonna take his life. And I pray that, and I pray that God takes the officer's life, so you can understand exactly how it feels to have another person's life taken away. Thank you for your time and not for your service.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Let me put my bag down. My name's Brian Foster. I am a third-generation resident of this city. My father went to EK, my mother went to Ottawa High, my stepfather went to Ottawa High, and my stepmother went to Creston. So I am blood of Grand Rapids. I am not a political activist. I am a historian by trade, by trade and education, and let me tell you what I see in Patrick's murder. I see 400 years of atrocity. I see one more atrocity in an endless list of atrocities. I see once again a council of people who... atrocity in an endless list of atrocities. I see, once again, a council of people who refuse to do what is right, because they want to stand by the status quo. It's awe-inspiring that this continues to happen. And it's awe-inspiring that you are surprised by it. Because if you look at our history, for the past 75 years of this 400-year war of genocide against my people, who has been the jackboots of this war? The police. Who has been armed? Who has been given military weapons to use against my people? The police. As someone who has the eyes of history, let me warn you. If you choose to bend to status quo, if you choose to retain power by whatever political machinations you so tenuously grasp onto, you will be among the gravediggers of history. You will be among the genociders. You will be among the colonizers. So please, as someone who is not a part of this political machinery, listen to us. Listen to history. The police needs reform, major reform. It needs reconstruction from its roots to the branches to all of it. And if you choose not to, then the forces of society will change it. Because we will not be stepped on anymore. We will not take a jackboot in the face any longer. Are you listening? This is a war that has lasted 400 years and spans every continent on the planet. My ancestors are littered across the Atlantic Ocean, and now Patrick Leoya lies dead in the street. Not strange fruit hanging from trees, but a discarded husk under the foot of a police officer. You should all be ashamed of yourself. Do better.
Thank you, Brian. Alright, others who wish to be heard?
My name is Bima Haji. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Uh, I'm gonna keep this short, because most of my community members said everything for me. But Eric, while you're in the room, I want to know, and later have the commission board explain, your 14 uses of excessive force, 86 more percent than all other officers. I am very familiar with you out of Chicago, sir. Also, your false arrests, and you wanna sit here and have us believe that you're gonna be transparent and to trust you in this case. You wanna know why Eric is so good at using the word transparency and stringing words together? Because corrupt, corrupt cops are the best at that, and Eric is one of the corrupt ones. I would also like to remind everyone in this room, remind everyone in this room, that the devils always sit front row at church, reciting scripture. Every last one of you. Mayor Bliss, you said on Sunday that you have put measures in place when things like this happen. But that is not what the community has asked of you. For over two years, we have been asking you, demanding of you, pleading with you to put measures in place to prevent things like this from happening. But you refuse to listen to us, and you refuse to do anything about it. So I would like to say, in your own words, Mayor Bliss, thank you. Your time is done. While you may hold that seat and that label before your name, you are not a mayor of the people. Today, you are fired by the people. You are never gonna be governor. You are not a leader of the community. You are a failure of the community. Mark Washington, oh, there's a, no, no. I just, you, what do you do besides be a yes-man and a token black man for these people and lick boots? That's all you do. I demand your resignation. We demand your resignation. Y'all ought to be ashamed of yourselves, and I hope that none of you sleep at night. I want you to look at your hands and know that the blood of Patrick is on it just as much as that murderous officer. Because y'all could have done something to prevent this. And in the recording we heard, Mark Washington, there is nothing that you will do to prevent this. Get the fuck up out of that seat. You don't deserve to sit there.
Alright, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Joylene Smith. Um, I'm a recovery, I'm a recovering addict, recovery from criminal activity. Um, I came up here because of the corruptness of the police. There are women that are incarcerated for killing tricks, and the rape kits and everything was covered up. There are young girls coming out of human trafficking, and when they come out, they don't have homes for 18 and older. Eighteen, they have them for 18 and older, but not 18 and younger. They send them to a locker. But yet, still, their man that killed this man has not been locked up yet. My daughter's house was broken until November 12th of last year. Last June, she went to Vegas, she let me use her car. And on her, while she was gone, somebody took it while I was getting high. My fault. I shouldn't have been getting high. I was sent papers from the court for unlawful use of a motor vehicle. My daughter told me that she didn't give me permission. My stepfather told me that she, he never told them, told me that I was supposed to return the truck. I'm seeing Mark Truss out. Why is this officer still not locked up? The man that broke into my daughter's house took over $10,000 worth of merchandise. She's got five kids. They took all their shoes, their food, and everything. He got 193 days. White guy. Explain that. All these open vacant buildings, the old rehab, right there on Cherry and Eastern. Why is that being used for young girls coming out of human trafficking, for people like me that's been through human trafficking, to help them, give back? Locking them up ain't gonna help them. Because they already brainwashed. Do better.
Thank you. Alright, others wish to be heard?
My name is Mirabelle Omene, and I am one of the African leaders in this community. Our African community is part and parcel of the Grand Rapids community. There's so many problems here, I don't even know where to start. If you can accommodate other communities and count them, why don't you start with us? It just shows the amount of neglect that has been going on in this city. We are not represented anywhere. We don't have a voice anywhere. We already come from situations where we have seen a lot of violence at different levels, and America was the land of the free and the brave, our last resort, and this is what happens. It's worse than where we come from, because we have people who don't even trust themselves to step out of their homes anymore. We have to learn very fast what it means to be black in America. We have to, every day wake up knowing that it could be the last day for our sons, our husbands, our brothers. It is not okay. How many white kids have interactions with cops and end up dead? How many? We have to work on police reform. This is the only country I've seen in the world where training is shorter than even people would do plumbing, plumbing. In other countries, it's three years. Because they have to train them through dealing with multicultural people, people from different ethnicities and tribes, and just having empathy, understanding, and de-escalating first before shooting. Is that something we can do in Grand Rapids? Can we also call some other department, apart from the police department, to be there and assist and help de-escalate the situation? If guns and violence is the only thing that's available? I am disgusted. And like my sister said here, we work hard here. We work really hard. We are a peaceful people. We believe in growing our city. That's what we do every day. This is our home.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Alright, others wish to be heard?
My name is Kai. I've been in Grand Rapids my whole life. My family has been in Grand Rapids. Their whole lives. Um, this is where we're from. And I'm disgusted to say I'm from Grand Rapids. It's nuts. But anyways, um, I was called to action when George Floyd called out for his mother when he took his last breath. I was not a protester before. I did not do anything of that nature, but that day, I ran down there with dishwater on my shirt, and I screamed, and I yelled, and I cried, because he called for his mother, who he knew was dead. What do you do with that, right? What do you do with that feeling as a mother? It's unexplainable, right? I'm here today also because you shot my brother down in the street. Patrick is dead. He will never come back. He's gone forever. His children will never know their father as they grow. He won't walk his children down the aisle or see his sons off to marry their, their daughters. Or, I mean, their wives, I'm sorry. But like, come on, you guys, this is ridiculous. I'm also here because this morning, my seven-year-old daughter, she's black, she's Italian, she's Mexican, and she asked me this morning, she's brown-skinned, "What if the cops kill me, Mom? I have brown skin. I'm so scared of the cops, Mom." So can you imagine if I were to ever get pulled over in a traffic stop and she'd be in the backseat, the, the absolute trauma she would have? Because I'm transparent with my children. They know exactly what happened to George Floyd. They know exactly what happened to Patrick. Because she's seven, and she needs to be aware for her own safety and survival. Isn't that sad? So sad. Um, let's see. Um, officers need to hold their own insurance. I work very hard for my money. I shouldn't be paying for somebody's wrongdoings. Um, and if they hold their own insurance, I bet you they'd be a lot less likely to kill people on the drop of a dime, or assault people on the drop of a dime, because you guys are just dishing out, say that our police should be disarmed? They don't have enough training? Are they even given psyche vows before they're hired in to be in a police officer? Six months, nine months? What is it, three, four, five, 600 hours that they get? And they're supposed to protect us? I had, my wife had to go to school for longer to be a dental assistant, to hold tools for a dentist. She had to go to school longer. It's insane. Not to mention cops have weapons. They have batons. They have mace. They have everything to protect themselves. We are preyed on, and they are the predator. Remember, that policing came from slavery.
Thank you.
Know what you are upholding. Know what you are doing.
Thank you.
Because it came from slavery. To catch the slave, to imprison the slave.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Because they're property.
My name is Wylen, and I'm a Grand Rapids resident. Um, activists in this city have shown up to these meetings consistently and asked the commissioners to rein in the GRPD. At this point, it's clear that you either do not have power over them, or you support their actions. You sit here, month after month, looking at your phones while GRPD abuses and harasses our community. You sat by, and now Patrick is dead. I can't help but wonder if the cop's name has made it to these meetings already. I can't help but wonder how many complaints were already filed against them. I bet you all feel like it's really inconvenient having to sit here, listen, and look concerned. We have asked time and time again, rein in GRPD, and you have shown us that it is not within your power. Your silence and your protecting this unnamed cop is disgusting. You knew this problem existed, and you failed to do your jobs. Any bl- I pay taxes here, and I don't want a dollar going towards covering for this crooked department. The cops that live in little sundown towns outside city limits. Not one more dollar toward their militarization that allows them to execute people in the streets. I hope you're hearing us, and I hope you know your empty platitudes are not enough anymore. Release the name of the killer, release the video unedited, um, strap the cop and put them in prison. Try to stand with the people for once. How many hours until GRPD comes out with their bikes and starts trying to arrest people who are asking them to stop murdering? Are you gonna protect us when that time comes? Or are you even gonna pretend to try and protect us? Defunding GRPD is not a request anymore, it's a demand, and the turnout today is nothing. You care about, oh, sorry. You're about to take the national spotlight, and I hope you are already. Doesn't matter what we say here, y'all are the ones that have to live with yourselves. We need justice, and we need transparency, and we will get it. We love this city. We love this city enough to fight for it. You and your donors love property. You protect the police so they can violently defend your property. You hold property over people, and we know how to speak that language. We will struggle for peace. You had your chance to get behind us, and you made your choice. The least you can do now is get out of the way. I yield the rest of my time.
Alright, others wish to be heard?
My name is Ken, um, and I've been in Grand Rapids for 20 years. I come from a city, Flint, Michigan, known for violence. Um, violence in communities, but also violence perpetrated from police against the community members. Um, the fact that the government still hasn't been arrested. You know, we moved here for a quote-unquote "better" life. Grand Rapids didn't have all of that. So we thought, right? Y'all good at covering it up. That's what happens over here, because the water is still bad. Wolverine gave out a bunch of free boots, you know, some years ago. Um, we, we know that. Now we have police. I was maybe from here to you, Rosalyn, away when the man got shot in the face with a canister. I was there that day when the police decided to come out in riot gear and stir up what was a peaceful protest, and stir up violence. And now you are doing something very similar today, putting up barricades. What are you preparing for? We're here to talk to you. We wanna talk, but you're ready for violence. That means you know something. You know who did it. You know it was done wrong, and you don't wanna release it. That's fine, we'll get the answer soon enough. But we've all talked about police restructuring, the fact that the police need to carry their own insurance, we know that. The fact that we need to reallocate dollars and do mental psyche vows, the fact that we need more structuring when it comes to training. You're giving military-grade equipment to people that don't have military training. Make that make sense to me. Why? When you go over in Europe, the police look like they are there to serve and protect. They wear bright colors. They're not hiding in the shadows. When you're hiding in the shadows, you're trying to attack somebody. You're here to commit a crime. I'm gonna read off a list of names, because we thought Grand Rapids was supposed to be better than this. George Floyd, Dante Wright, Eric Garner, Michael Brown, Laquan McDonald, Tamira Rice, Walter Scott, Freddie Gray, Philando Castile, Justine Damon, in the shirt that I'm wearing right now, Breonna Taylor. She was from here. I went down to Louisville and saw how that happened. I was in Minneapolis and saw how that happened when they were up in the Hennepin County courtroom. It's disgusting that you all are sitting here protecting a man that blatantly killed somebody, and now we have Patrick Leoya here. We're on national news, when we were supposed to be better than that. You're supposed to be better than that. I want y'all to know one thing before I leave, is that you don't have any power. What power you think you have was granted by us. Everybody in this room who may have voted for you has the right to not vote for you again. So the fact that you wanna sit here with smug faces, some of y'all over there, Mr. Moody, I'm watching you. Mark Washington, you've been on everybody's list. You might as well just not run again, man. Like, just, just don't do it.
Sir, yeah, I'm sorry.
My time is up. I get you, but just know that y'all's time is about to be up too.
Thank you. Alright, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I'm from the Third Ward. Um, a community conversation took place this past Sunday with civil rights attorney Ben Crump. Um, this took place only because Robert Womack stepped up, not because any of you stepped up. Um, he's the only city official that majority of us have any respect for at this point. Um, at this event, Ben Crump stated that people all around the country will watch this video and witness what occurred on April 4th, when GRPD executed an unarmed black man. Ben Crump further stated that your leadership will be on display. This city commissioners, and specifically Mayor Bliss, should terrify each one of you. For the past two years, groups of local activists, organizers, and community members have attended these city commission meetings and demanded the end of GRPD's police brutality. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of public There are hundreds, if not thousands, of public comments on record of all of us demanding to you to do better. You have failed to listen to the people that you've been elected to represent. The murder of Patrick not only falls on the officer and GRPD, but also the leadership of this city. So this is exactly what will be on display for the world to see. It's very apparent that GRPD and the city knows that the video will show the truth. Today, the city had barricades placed around the outside of the police station and areas along downtown. This is essentially an admission of guilt. We demand that you release the videos without edits. We demand that the officer be named and arrested. We demand that Mark Washington step down as city manager. We demand that you stop harassing and overpleasing the southeast side of Grand Rapids. Patrick died just a block, a few blocks from my home on the southeast side. As a white woman living on the southeast side, the only safety concern I have about living in my neighborhood is the amount of GRPD officers that stalk black and brown bodies. And that's my concern. Justice for Patrick is why we're all here. A lot of us have been here continually asking and demanding the end of GRPD's police brutality and you have gone and done the opposite. You, each meeting, you guys talk about new options for police funding, taking and accepting grants, different trainings, and so on. This is our tax dollars. Our tax dollars just allowed a GRPD officer to murder an unarmed black man in our community. That's all I have to say.
Others wish to be heard?
Hello. I don't know that I will say anything that someone before me hasn't already said, but I would like to stress that I feel that you and the cops are focusing on the wrong problem. As people have stated, they're putting up barricades. You and them see us as the enemy. You're not focused on how do we stop the cops from killing people, you're focused on how do we stop people from getting angry when the cops kill people? And that needs to change, cuz like, as we've seen, how much effort is being put into how do we make this look okay so people don't get angry? Have you put the same amount of effort into figuring out how to actually solve the problem? Um, yeah. Uh, we need to have this amount of energy and effort put into actually fixing it so people don't get killed and people aren't hurt. Because it wasn't just sudden, this didn't just happen out of nowhere. Uh, we've been coming here and I've, me not as much as some others, but many people have been coming here for over a year and people have been harmed on the way here. I'm really curious if the cop who did this ends up being someone who's hurt one of the protesters before? Cuz you know, maybe we could've prevented this if you had listened when people had talked about getting knocked down, getting choked, things like that by cops just trying to get to this meeting. Um, but yeah, uh, that is, that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
This is my nine-year-old daughter. I catch a lot of hell sometimes because I don't teach my kids to participate in Christmas and Easter and the Two Fairy and Tinker Bell and those little things like that. Meanwhile, I'm teaching my daughter how confused the system is. Private prisons? Private prisons? It makes no sense to me. The government? The police department? Who's policing the police? That has always been a statement that bothers me cuz it is so true. Who is policing the police? Who is the boss over you? Who are you answering to? Who are they answering to? It's really confusing for, you know, regular people like us. What is your job? I don't know half of the things that most of you people do. I made a statement one time that we need to remove the elders out of the system. You guys have no room here anymore. You deal with old rhetorics and we're in 2022. My daughter has had multiple different young men that has been killed recently. She has had more deaths in her generation than I've had in mine and I'm thirty-eight years old. It's so sad that she's afraid of the police, more than she's afraid of the inner city. When she sees the police coming, she immediately cringes. When she goes into the neighborhood and the community, she feels a little safer by her own people. That says a lot for the police. I called the police one time because there was a man running around with a gun in my complex. They came an hour and a half later. We would've been dead. When my son was shot, they were there on the scene immediately harassing us about what was he doing in that area? What was the guy's wearing? A bunch of questions that made no sense at the time when my son was fighting for his life. The police is a disgrace all over the world, not just here.
You have something you wanna say?
She said that she has a lot to say, but she wouldn't have enough time to speak on everything. I think that I am black and I don't have the right to deserve to die if I, if somebody tried to kill me, I am black, so come kill me. I bet you won't. And do I know if I'm gonna ever be able to live my whole life? Because of every single one of y'all wanting to let these people come around and kill people for no reason. They did anything, they did not do anything to y'all. I am done with y'all. We're gonna stand on her time? And we need justice and show us that video without any editing and just like that. Her generation matters.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Michelle Halliburton and I attend Ottawa Hills High School and I'm going to school for cosmetology and law. I just wonder how in eighteen eighty-six slaves were free? But how come I don't feel free? How come I have to wake up every morning wondering if that's gonna be my last breath? Why do I have to wake up every morning wondering, is my sister gonna be okay? Is my mom gonna be okay? Is all my loved ones gonna be fine? Why do I have to wake up and think about police brutality every single day? Why can't I wake up and feel normal? Why can't we all just be normal, you know? I just don't understand it. And they hate us cuz they're not us. They can't be us, they steal our culture, they hurt us, they just- They hate us cuz they're not us. They steal our, steal everything we do. We brave, we do hair, we do everything. They sell our products, they beat us hurtfully. They just, I don't know. Patrick did not deserve to die. He had, got shot in the head because he was black. They see our skin and immediately think, oh, drug dealers. Oh, we're stealers, we're thieves, we're all of those, these things. But if the tables were turned around, they would be in jail. If I was the one who shot someone, I would be in jail immediately. There would be no questions asked, there would be nothing. But first, a police to shoot a black African-American is sickening, is disgusting. I just, I can't believe I have to wake up in this community and Grand Rapids to know that someone has shot another of my black brothers and sisters. Every day, the list just keeps going up and up. That should not be happening. And you guys are sitting here like it's normal, it's going out this ear and going out the other ear. So I just don't understand how you have your jobs and your this and that. You're just stacking a check. You're not worried about this and that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, you should be thanking me for my time.
Thank you for your time. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Brandy Cambrell. I've been a Grand Rapids resident for thirty-eight years. And, um, I never thought with my troubled background and awe that I would feel, I feel like I feel like Trayvon's parents, Patrick's parents, Breonna's parents. And I feel that way because on April 5th, when I seen what was happening to Patrick going viral, I reached out to my teenagers back there, seven, eighteen and nineteen years old. And I called them and said, hey, be careful today. You know, it's wild out here, these police is out here acting like the real menaces, not y'all. Be careful out here. And it was my birthday. So I got out at like eleven PM to go pay my branding expert and I get a phone call from Messenger from my whole area. My heart literally just dropped. I left where I was at, flew down Prince Street and sure enough, it was tons of police officers. The fact that my innocent never been in a fight, never been suspended from school, never been in trouble, never a write-up, never even go outside and we live in the inner city of the community. My kids has good credit, they has morals, they have everything that all of our kids deserve that they're not getting, like the resources and alternatives. My kids got pulled over, my sis, my son got bit by a K-9 all because they say he yielded through a stop sign. I don't feel like that was proper for the thugs to give the K-9, the demand to bite my son. My three kids was in the car leaving McDonald's, getting ice cream and french fries. And because they're privileged kids driving around in brand-new vehicles, the cops basically, the cops basically like discriminates against them because of our residence and because of our color. Because we live where we live, we have to go through police brutality. The fact that the neighbors are telling me my son laid on the floor saying he couldn't breathe the same day that police killed Patrick, it doesn't sit well with me. I'm now feeling like I'm not safe. I'm now feeling like, do I have to move off the inner city? Is it my fault because y'all not protecting us as a people at all? And it's fucked up because we get judged because of our color. We get judged because of where we live and it's not fair. My son finished graduate, straight A's and B's, worked at a nursing home, and now he's traumatized. K-9, he had to sit in jail for a day. And it's like, why? Because we live by Miss Tracy's? Because they driving in a brand-new orange bright Charger and it looks suspicious? My kids were harassed, they were beaten by the cops. And that's not fair. They haven't never witnessed fighting on the streets. So they first fight have to be from the people who supposed to serve and protect us? It's not cool.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Brandy.
My son, yeah.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
I'm sure it is.
Sorry, uh, my name's Shannon. Uh, born, raised, Grand Rapids. Uh, I went to a Grand Rapids Public School, went to Grand Valley, got my degree in political science. And there's something you learn about the social contract of how we have built our government, which you guys are all part of, right? So we're holding up our end of the contract by being here, holding you guys accountable for your city. We're asking you to do your jobs that you campaigned for, some of you were just handed. We're holding up our end by asking to be safe. That's the point of society. We live together, we live communally so that we are safe. And you guys have dropped the ball, hundred percent, on the floor. Our community, the whole community deserves to be safe, deserves to be listened to and respected when they're speaking by all of you. We are your constituents, we are your bosses, okay? So it's- I'm a little lost for words, but, um, you guys owe as little bit of justice that can be given at this point. True justice, Patrick would be alive. That's justice. And we can't have that. His family can't have that. His community can't have that. Our community can't have that. Because you guys dropped the ball. You said the police, they need more money. For what? What, what did the community benefit? That's what you guys owe us. With the rest of my time, I guess I would just like to reiterate the demands of Patrick's family and of this community. We request that all body and dashboard camera footage is publicly released immediately. Um, you guys been sitting on your hands for over a week. This also includes the officer who killed Patrick, any other officers who were on the scene at the murder. The city must release the name of the officer who shot and killed Patrick. The city of Grand Rapids, the Kent County Chief Medical Examiner and GRPD must allow an external autopsy to be conducted. And translators must be present with any communication with Patrick's family. And, um, I'm just gonna hold the rest of my time because you guys have wasted so much of ours. Patrick.
Justice.
Justice. Justice for Patrick.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Harmony Erhun Nguyen. Um, I'm a Grand Rapids resident, born, raised. I've lived in the Third Ward for the last six years. And, um, I'm also an educator. I've spent time serving you guys at restaurants, Rosalyn Bliss, I've served you at restaurants. You go to every, almost every single restaurant opening. Kurt Rapper, I've witnessed you sit in my community and talk to our residents and speak about how you care about the people in Roosevelt Park neighborhood. Melinda, you too? I've watched you guys sit at this meeting and you're uncomfortable. Oh, it must be so uncomfortable, right? To listen to us talk and I demand justice for Patrick. How uncomfortable does it feel for the youth in Grand Rapids when there are police in their schools every day? And they have to see them outside of the schools and they know what police do to black and brown people, children in this city? This last year, you guys voted to increase the budget for the police department, I believe, to thirty-six percent. You guys funded Patrick's murder. You voted and approved that budget. Will you do it again this year too? You gonna fund more training for the police officers, better weapons, new cars? What about our community? We have houseless folks all down division and it's expanding every single year. I have friends that are losing housing because of how expensive it is to live in Grand Rapids, in the Third Ward too. I've lived there for six years and rent has increased a hundred percent, more than that at some places. This increase of housing has pushed people onto the streets and enforced, create more police on the streets enforcing houses, folks pushing them out of the city further and further out. What are you doing? What are you trying to create? You're trying to create the center, this mecca almost, for white supremacy. You're pushing our residents out of the city by increasing the policing. You're making our residents afraid. I ask each of you to think and reflect on your actions and how your power impacts the city. and how your power impacts the city. You will not have your jobs. You will be losing your jobs. We will not be asking you to come back. Please release the video, the names of the police officers that were involved with Patrick's murder. De-fund the police, decrease the budget. And think about how your impact and what you do. And I'm looking at all of you commissioners who come to all sorts of city events and want to, you know, show off and dig your deeper pockets. Reflect. Because you will not be back here. You'll be leaving very soon.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello. My name is Reverend Greta Jo Seidel. I live in Grand Rapids. I'm here today as a minister, as a religious leader, as a community member, as a mother, as a human. Because none of those things get to be separated from each other just as your humanity does not get to be separated from the job you chose and the actions you take while you embody it. They are a part of how you live out your humanity in this world. I want to be clear that they've made the demands clear. You've had a chance to listen. I hope you did. They've made it clear that you are responsible. I want to say that I am responsible too. And any member of this community, particularly white members of this community who chose not to speak up, who chose not to show up over the last two years, over the last, I don't even know how many years, when these activists have been here saying, asking for us to show up, for us to listen. Just listen. To really listen. We had that chance and we didn't take it. I didn't take it. You didn't take it. And so this is on us. We had the chance to act, to change, to choose justice. And you... It is easy, it is easy to quote the law, to cite process, to quote rules and procedure. But there is no amount of performative red tape or procedure as your religion that will save you from the sin of silence. These laws, those procedures were made by humans and they can be unmade by humans, these humans sitting before us. You have a choice. You had one, but you have another one. You have been given another chance to make a different choice. Redemption is not lost. Hope is not lost. This is what hope looks like. The fact that you are here two and a half hours later and then some is what hope looks like. Hope is not lost. Change is possible, but you have to make a different choice, a new choice, a choice that makes you uncomfortable, that makes you question who you are. If you come from the Christian faith tradition, I want to remind you that it is Holy Week. And Holy Week is much more than Easter. It is turning the tables in the temple. That was Jesus's, one of Jesus's last acts of ministry in this world.
Thank you.
Protest and anger.
Thank you.
Choose wisely.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Sophia and I moved to Grand Rapids the past four years where I have been a graduate student in public health at Grand Valley. And I'm here to say that the way you treat the African community is a public health crisis in Grand Rapids. And make no mistake, I am in every Facebook group, I am in every classroom telling my fellow students what the city is doing. They know. They will come out in waves. The definition of insanity is doing nothing and expecting a different result. Are you all insane? How did you get your jobs being this insane? You need to release the video. You should have released the video extremely earlier. You need to not edit the video. You need to allow external autopsy and you need to name the murderer. You may care about the safety of the cop who murdered Patrick, but what about Patrick's safety? I hope what you have done haunts you at night. When you are sitting there laying on the pillow, I hope you think about this. I hope when you're on the toilet in the morning, you think about this. I hope when you get your coffee, you think about this. And the great thing about life is that you can wake up and decide a new thing tomorrow. You can resign tomorrow. You can do it. And make no mistake, we will abolish the police. If it is not tomorrow, it will be in the coming years. And I'm going to hold the rest of my time.
Release the name of any other murderer. It'd be right on News Eight, Channel Thirteen.
Exactly. It would be, you would release the name of any other murderer.
Immediately.
Now.
Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Hannah. I am a senior at Calvin University right now and I get to graduate in two weeks. And I say that very thankfully because I know there is a very long list of names of people who are my age or younger who never got to watch across this age. I'm up here addressing the woman who spoke earlier about white interactions with cops and I'd like to express mine. A little over a year ago, I was stopped on Martin Luther, Martin King Luther, excuse me. I was stopped on NLK Junior Street. Traffic stop. My license plate didn't match my car make. I drive a little Ford Focus and the police officers told me that my license plate belonged to a pickup truck. The entire encounter lasted maybe ten minutes. I got to stay in my car. I'm pretty sure they cracked about three jokes and I got to leave without a warning. I don't need to ask you what the difference was in my situation in Patrick's because you know. This next bit is for Grace Cole, who is watching the stream at home. About two weeks ago in our social work class, we got to do a project called a transsect walk. It's when you pick one street, you pick a social problem and make it very obvious what's going on in that area and we chose police brutality. I have the document right here. I'm not gonna read it. It's ten pages, single-spaced. And the harsh reality of it is that we had to narrow it down, the cases that we picked, for time's sake, for our peers to actually conduct the walk. We had to narrow it down by quite a bit. I just want to say, the numbers are adding up in terms of dates, in terms of hospital visits, in terms of funerals. You know. I would offer to show you this document or send it to you, but the truth is, is we got all our research from y'all's records. You know. You know. Really, I have nothing else to say. I don't know what to say. I'm baffled. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Tatiana Spencer. I am a public school teacher. I teach fifth graders. My students are nine, ten and eleven years old. And I guard my bedtime religiously. I go to bed at nine o'clock every night. But I don't when there's injustice. I don't when I think about, I could have done something wrong to protect my students if I could have handled a situation different. Those are the things that keep me up at night or wake me up in the middle of the night or make me start my day way earlier. I hope this is the same for you. Fifty-nine years ago, on April sixteen, nineteen sixty-three, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. wrote the letter from the Birmingham Jail. And in it, he addressed that racial segregation or injustice in black American society is due to the continual encouragement and power that is given to white society, that is given to white people in power. And I stood before my students right after spring break telling them excitedly of Kenyatta Brown Jackson being elected and being so excited for my black students and my brown students to see her elected and what that meant for them. And then in the same breath, having to have my students bring up to me what happened to Patrick and me knowing it and being scared to talk about it with them. This is not okay. My students today spent twenty minutes where they couldn't learn because they were so upset about what's happening in their world. And our kids get it. That girl that shared earlier, she got it. I almost wish you would have stepped outside of how you are normally acting because a baby, a nine-year-old, is standing up for her rights and enacting her, her power as her First Amendment rights. And, and I didn't see that and I wish I would have. And I wish I would have stopped and clapped even though that's not the rules. Because if it was my student in my school, I would have stood up clapping and cheering. Our students gets what, gets what, what is wrong. And I want you to. And everybody's here and you didn't make a place for everybody. But everybody stayed and found a place on the floor downstairs. I wish you would have found a bigger space. That would have been really nice. That would have showed, my school stands for equity and excellence and I would hope that you would stand for the same thing. And you showed me that you didn't when you didn't make space for everybody that has a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I'm so angry. My name is Chelsea and many of you already know me because I don't talk mess to all of you. So last Monday, I looked up how many people have been killed by police this year. At that time, it was a hundred and eight. I looked it up this morning and it was a hundred and forty-four. GRPD just made it one forty-five. In the matter of little over a week, there has been thirty-seven people who have been killed by the police. For going on three years, we have went to every single commissioner meeting, protested, marched and did petitions, telling the city officials numerous of times that GRPD is on a power chip and if they don't start holding them accountable, another black person was going to be killed by the hands of the police. Instead of caring about what happens to the people in our communities, y'all main focus has been on how to make money, money and more money. Y'all have showed time and time again that y'all don't care nor value our black lives. It sickens me every single time I see y'all black and brown individuals in these commissioner seats who put y'all jobs before y'all blackness. How can you sit here and choose a system before your own people? It disgusts me. Y'all are the true definition of all skinfolk and kinfolk. All of you that are on this board are just as much to blame as GRPD for Patrick's death. All of you elected officials, don't stay comfortable in these seats for much longer. I will work my butt off to make sure every single one of you are voted out of this year and in two thousand twenty-four. Anita Hitchcock and Mark Washington, y'all for damn sure better not stay too comfortable either. Because I will work my hardest to make sure the people that fills those elected seats will be the ones removing both of you. It's been well over seventy-two hours and GRPD still has not released the name of the inhumana officer who killed Patrick. That goes to show that GRPD, as well as all of you on this board, is trying to come up with a story and refuse to let them come, let y'all come up with a false narrative. Y'all killed a black king in broad daylight and when the community shows up in numbers, now y'all want to be cowards and hide. Y'all really thought we were just gonna let y'all cover this up? This up? Not happening on my watch. We must continue protecting our black queens and protecting us black queens at all costs because we are being killed at alarming rates every year. I'm just so angry, so, so angry. Every intersection of my body is angry and tired of seeing my people being killed by the police. I'm angry because y'all came to a community conversation on Sunday and sat there to act like y'all cared, but y'all were only there for a photo op. For Mayor Bliss to sit there, say they, say they have been putting precautions in place for the last two years, where are those policies? Because all I've saw is you continuously sit back and watch as protesters slash revolutionaries continuously be harassed and brutalized every week. I'm tired of the suffering my people have experienced and what we continuously have to endure. I'm tired of a black woman or man's name being reduced by a hashtag. Last but not least, Eric, you are a piece of scum.
Period.
A piece of scum. And you really think you about to come here and cover up a whole entire murder? Not on my watch. It's not happening. Fuck you.
Yes.
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Donnie, but that's neither here nor there. Justice for Patrick. Justice for Patrick, justice for Patrick, justice for Patrick, justice for Patrick. Ashay, 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 ashay. I say this because I'm manifesting the justice for Patrick. I say this because I am speaking life into these words that I'm about to give you. Because someone died. Because Patrick LaHoya, Lawyer, died. He's not here no more. So I'm glad that y'all setting up straight for what I'm about to say because Patrick cannot anymore. And I hope you listen up really good because I lost my voice because I scream for the lives of not only Patrick, but the, but the people who have died. And the long list of other revolutionaries that have been screaming the names of people dying and being murdered across the nation due to a black genocide. Now, we've came here going on year number three, saying the same exact thing. I came here and, and came, and overcame my fears to tell my experiences, to share my experiences. We told you that GRPD is out of control and your answer is, well, maybe you should join them. We told you that GRPD attacks protesters and you told us you should join them. We told you that this was going to get worse and you sat in those chairs looking down your nose as if you could not see us. I hope you see us now. I hope you see us continuing moving forward. I hope Mayor Bliss that we are more than just handshakes, photo ops and hugs. We don't need your sympathy right now. What we need is action steps. What you said, that you were going, that you stood in front of that family in that church and you promised that family that you were going to do and make those steps. Where are they? Where are they, Anita Hitchcock? Where are they, Mark Washington? Where are they, Nathanae Moody? Where are they? Everyone else who's on this board doing nothing. Where are they? What are those steps? Because we are sick and tired of you sending Brandon Davis and this other, and this other, uh, 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 person who handles your little, your paperwork to meet us in the, in the elevator to have this conversation. Because we know that this conversation is bigger than an elevator. So let me tell you. Justice for Patrick. Justice for Patrick, justice for Patrick.
I'm Casey and I live in the Third Ward. So one thing I know and two things for certain. WLMAC, the NAACP and our city officials and the world needs to put some respect on our leaders, especially our black leaders. The march wasn't peaceful because WLMAC asked us to be. He showed up late. The march wasn't peaceful because the LaHoya family asked us to be, although we do respect them. The march was peaceful because we've been peacefully protesting for two years straight, over a hundred events. There was one destructive protest in the city of Grand Rapids in the summer of two thousand twenty. The destruction was done by out-of-towners who do not live here. We have not seen them since. They are not us. We have not seen them since. They are not us. The city officials know this. The community knows this, and WOMAC knows this. So how come every time they bring us up or bring up that march, it's to discredit us? That's not us. You're really discrediting yourselves by turning our hard work into a publicity stunt. Don't come to our events if you're not going to tell the whole truth. Don't watch us repeatedly turn down news interviews and then turn around and speak a false narrative about us at your press conferences. We're steadily trying to uplift our BIPOC, friends, family, and neighbors. And what we're not going to do is disrespect them in any way, shape, or form. It took every fiber of my body not to yell out during the meeting. WOMAC didn't have anything to do with the march. He showed up to our march. You're welcome. So for him to stand in that meeting and discredit us and talk about the young activists, good thing, thank God, I asked for peace, and we got it. Thanks for showing up to our event, WOMAC. Stop calling yourselves city leaders and put some respect on the people who really are. Bliss, you went up there and said that you had placed actions and steps to prevent this? Which ones? Name one. You talking about stop the violence? You talking about when you put the felons out unarmed to go do what the police need more weapons for? I expect this from you because out of white people, Europeans, we are generation after generation after generation of greed and capitalism and racism. I expect that from you, from you, from you, from you. Maybe from you. I don't know what you identify as. So I expect that. But from you, from you, from you, from you, I got one little bit of sympathy from you when you said, oh, the story of this six- or seven-year-old in your family. Then you got a promotion? You haven't said a word since. Not a word since. What are you gonna do? I asked Brandon Davis, what is he gonna do when his term is up? And he's another black man in the street. You know what he said? I don't have to explain my blackness to you. I follow the law. That's the problem. The law is not written for us. What are you going to do about it?
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you.
Your time's almost up, too, and you. And y'all gonna be out here black.
Thank you.
Than what? No more raises? Than what?
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Nick Dobkowski. I'm a resident of the Second Ward. And it's hard for me to ascertain what commissioners could do because police have a lot of power.
Can you let him speak?
So we had this discussion a couple of years ago about how we could decrease the police budget and hold them accountable. And we threw some bureaucratic shenanigans. That didn't happen. And now we have another chance. Like the pastor who spoke very eloquently was saying, it's on all of us, and we can still do something. As Mr. Washington prepares the city budget, he can decrease the police budget. And the commissioners, if he does not do that, can vote no on the budget. And you don't even have to not like the police to do this. Like Dr. Baldwin said, when I love America so much that I reserve the right to perpetually criticize her. And so you can like the police, but want better for them. And there needs to be better because people are dying. Even if they get beat or they get harassed, it's not okay. And there are things that we can do. And we can go anywhere from 36% to 32% to changing the city charter to make it anywhere from 32% to 0% of the total budget. Let's do that. Let's do something. I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. Eileen, Ward Two. I'd like to apologize for my demeanor. I sustained a laceration the other day, and I'm just a little bit woozy. I'd like to start out by saying, so as to not detract from the city of Grand Rapids' main concern at the moment, which is the death of one of its citizens, Patrick... Sorry. Murder of one of its citizens, Patrick LaHoya, by the Grand Rapids Police Department. But more to emphasize how our current commission has brought us here. I have spoken before the commission, before this particular commission a few times in the past about my individual concerns with how the Grand Rapids Police Department handles crime in Grand Rapids. They showed up 30 minutes late to a violent person who got into my house and was banging on my bedroom door and waved away my concerns with saying, well, he was just looking for his backpack. And so the police do not apply their considerable force to deescalate violent encounters when they are occurring at another time in the summer of 2020. I suffered a sexual assault. I showed up the morning after. I got a rape kit done. I suffered lacerations to my labia. Still, it took a year of me calling and then eventually me showing up to the Grand Rapids Police Department crying, asking, after a year, why was my detective not reaching out to me to get my statement before they ultimately, after me making a scene, got me in contact with my detective for that case? So they don't deescalate violent encounters when they happen. They don't resolve violent encounters after they happen. So when it comes to the concept of, well, what do we do about the police? And the concern is, well, what about crime? I would discourage anyone from thinking that, well, the presence of the police handles crime. Obviously, it doesn't. And there's a lot of evidence behind the fact that the communities and the cities and the nations with the least amount of crime are the ones where the citizens are most supported in their needs, not necessarily the ones that are the most policed. And I think this particular commission has been given quite a lot of feedback from its constituents to reflect and come to that conclusion on their own by this point. And that the fact that they haven't is just kind of, to reemphasize other people's points, just kind of underlining how you're not really trying to represent your constituents' concerns with the actions that you take, specifically in regards to the GRPD. You would have quite a lot of funds to do the kinds of things that meet your citizens' needs and reduce crime if you didn't have to pay the GRPD budget. Now, I'm going to go home and drink fluids and rest. I should not have had to come here and say this with my thumb split open.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. Sam Mickens Jr., Third Ward, 41 years, Grand Rapids, born and raised. I believe in the phrase that when friends call, friends come. And as I stand here, I see a bunch of friends and some people that I've grinded with and that I know grind. I look at Sunita, I look at Joe and Pastor Moody because I know you all. I had the opportunity to speak with Joe to a bunch of kids a couple of weeks ago. Right? We spoke about three weeks ago to a bunch of kids. And we were talking about the things that were important to them. And one of the topics was man law and what did that mean to them? And some of the young men said, don't talk to the police for any reason. And that was at the table that I was responsible for. And as we're talking with them, I'm saying, hey, what do you mean by not? Don't talk to the police. What does that mean to you? Not for me, but what does it mean to you? And they said, why would we talk to the police when the police kill us? Or why would we talk to the police when the police shoot us? And we're talking and encouraging the conversation and trying to encourage them to change their view. And I got a text, and it's not many times that I'm speechless. And anybody that knows me knows that. I could rub my mouth with the best of them. The young man said, Mr. Mickens, what do you got to say about the young African boy? I didn't have a response. I didn't. I don't have answers. A couple of weeks ago, I'm sorry. Last week, I was in the car with my nephew and my three girls. And we were pulled over. I was speeding. I was wrong. And when the officer let me go, didn't give us a ticket, my nephew, who is 15, said, at least you didn't get shot, Uncle Sam. I mean, these are the things that our young kids are saying. So I believe now we have a good, teachable moment to prove these young men and these young future leaders right that we will handle this situation efficiently and with whatever level of accountability that we can because we have the team to do it. And I know I believe in our city, and I believe in these young kids. So let's not lose them with this situation. You know, we have everyone up here who is capable, who works hard, who are all grinders. And I've worked hand-to-hand with a lot of you. And let's just do the right thing, and let's restore some faith in these kids. As adults, we all have our different opinions and stuff, but these babies are watching. And let's just do the right thing by them. It's my time.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Justin Addio. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. Well, I was gonna come up here and say what everyone else has been saying, that we've been telling you for like two years now, over and over again, that if you don't make sweeping reform, that something like this would happen. And the blood would be on your hands. And it did happen, and it is. But you know, there's something else that just doesn't set right with me about this, this whole thing. This isn't your average case of police brutality here, okay? He was unarmed, face down on the ground, and shot in the back of the head, okay? He wasn't fleeing the scene and got shot in the back. He wasn't reaching for his wallet, and they thought it was a gun, like they say, of course. But you know, this was done execution-style. And in fact, I would say he was executed from where I was looking at. And I want to know why he was executed and why you're trying to cover it up? Why you're dragging your feet with all the evidence in this? It's beyond me. It's absolutely beyond me. If this was an execution, why was he executed? Did he know something? Did he know the cop? How far does this rabbit hole of corruption go down? Now, you're gonna say that this is paranoia. This is just conspiracy theories. We don't know what you're doing with the evidence. For a week, you could have been making it look like it's something it wasn't, okay? We don't know. We want transparency. We want accountability. And we want to know why this happened. Because if we're just met with secrecy and obfuscation, these questions are gonna come up, and we're gonna think the worst of you guys. All right? And basically, that's what I have to say on this matter. But if this was just some random thing, this wasn't planned because it seems almost like he had it out for this guy, to be honest, from where I'm looking at it. If it was just random act, why are you hiring homicidal maniacs onto the police force? Because shooting someone who's unarmed, restrained, on the ground in the back of the head is the act of a psychopath, okay? And I think you might want to change your policy on hiring people like that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Andrea. I don't have a speech prepared today, but I wanted to show up and show solidarity and full support to the LaHoya family. As I've said before, I can empathize with all of you for your loss and your pain as a human being. But I cannot ever understand what it's like to be black, what the trauma is like, what the fear is like, what the anger is like. I don't have to carry that around with me and constantly worry that I may be targeted for the color of my skin or that someone I love may not make it home. Someone I love may be murdered by the hands of killer racist cops. I am extremely angry and disgusted with all of you. We've all stood here and told you countless times that GRPD brutalizes our black friends as well as our trans friends, and you didn't listen, you didn't care, you did nothing. Patrick was murdered because of you because you did nothing to rectify your police department. Now you want to eat up all this publicity because it's always about the image of Grand Rapids and your image as a politician. Like shameful cowards, you've been stalling and giving every excuse not to release the officer's name or the video. But now that you have put barricades up around your police department, GRPD plans to release the video after eight days, which goes to show that your only concerns are protecting the money and the property, and you don't care or value human lives. Since the family has seen the video, I believe what they say they saw. So the video you release better not be edited. I hope you're not that stupid, but you never cease to amaze me, which is why I will do everything in my power to vote you all out. And I will work my butt off to get others to vote as well because we need leaders that represent the people of Grand Rapids. Justice for Patrick.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
You're not the boss's servant. You're a public servant.
Hello. Hi. Hello, my name is Raina Hernandez, daughter of Dr. Jose Flores, who had an incident with the Grand Rapids Police Department. And I just want to talk to the police department. I don't even want to say anything to you guys in regards of this matter, but to the police department, does the color of my skin bother you? Did the color of his skin bother you? Was the jewelry he wearing, or was wearing, bother you? I would like to know. Do you guys have kids? I have four, and they're mixed,[1629.48] I have four, and they're mixed, African American and Hispanic. I don't feel safe. My kids don't feel safe. They go to the Grand Rapids Public Schools, they eat their food, they're there all the time. They don't even feel safe. Nobody can answer that. That's the issue. It's sad. It is sad that the police officers, they sit there and they hide out, they hide out at the bars in the southeast side. They hide out, waiting. They'll get behind you, they'll follow you, they'll run your license plate, then they'll pull you over and antagonize you, harass you, especially if you're brown, black, with a nice car, with a good job. You can work in a factory making eighteen, nineteen, twenty dollars an hour. And it's a problem in the city of Grand Rapids with the police officers. That's what irritates my soul. We're supposed to work. We're supposed to pay our taxes. We're paying you guys. Our tax dollars are paying you. And what are you guys going to do? What are you guys going to do about this? Racism is real. It is real. How do you feel about this? How do you feel about this? A black man is dead. For what? Why didn't he use a taser? Did he use a taser? Why did he pull out a gun? Why did he shoot him in the back of the head? We are human beings, we are not thugs, we are not gangsters. This is sad. I am sad. But yet, I'm going to get up here and I'm going to be respectful, because me, I am Grand Rapids. I was born and raised in Grand Rapids. My father, my father is a very successful man. Dr. Jose Flores sued the Grand Rapids Police Department.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Denise. I do want to set my intentions before I start to speak. I'm speaking because I am a black woman and I feel like it's important that I fight for my life. I'm here because I'm an immigrant and I understand how it feels to be condescended because of that. And because I know I'm going to have children and I want to bring them up in the most safe place that I feel like I can, and that I did everything that I could to make sure that that happens. I don't have to tell y'all that I'm disappointed, but I am. And to Eric and to all of y'all, all I ask is that y'all not play with us. And I would say, don't play with us like kids, but the kids are watching too. And the kids ain't stupid. The kids saw Philando Castile, they saw George Floyd, they know what's going on, and they shouldn't have to see that and have to live in fear. There's been a lot of concerns that have been made, and I won't lie, it's intimidating being up here, knowing that people come here all the time and they make their intentions clear about what they want to see changed in the city, and y'all don't do nothing. But I do feel like I'm trying my best and I really hope that y'all do too. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be a black and white when everybody looks at the history books, and y'all know where y'all stand. So I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say quit y'all jobs, because it's going to be somebody who's going to be running to replace y'all. But I will say to everybody else in here who cares about black lives and cares about the people who they grew up with in their community, do not let the pressure off. Literally, once we see them tapes, do not let the pressure off. This is our city. We was able to march for Mike Brown, we was able to march for Breonna Taylor, this is in our city, this is our people. So yeah, I don't have a lot of respect for y'all, I really just do hope that y'all do better. Not just because of your position, because your position does hinder y'all from doing better. I know that y'all have people who y'all need to see too, who tell y'all to be quiet and to not conduct yourselves in certain ways and to not conduct yourself in 100% honesty. But still, y'all got to serve God too. Whether you see it that way or not, there's something that y'all have to serve to and something that y'all need to be able to stand on and be proud of, because your kids are watching y'all too. I yield my time for this. Be transparent and have integrity.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark from Grand Rapids. You knew it had to happen? You knew it had to happen. And it did. A cop. Just unarmed. Black immigrant. Who knows very little English. Has knee down on the back of his back. And off him in the back of the head, execution style. Not good. And to make matters worse. There was rumors that it's a hit on the county commissioner. Below not good. Just false on feet of all y'all. You should be ashamed of yourselves. You allow bad culture to run rampant around here. And you'll have to pay for it. There will be lawsuits, trust me. You can fool them, but you can't fool me. I've been lifelong resident, I've been a resident of Grand Rapids for a long time. I've seen less out of town than here, than I've seen here. And now you are on the map, along with every single, every single unarmed black man being killed by police. Unbelievable. And that tape better not, better be raw and unedited. And I want, and I want the killer, name and picture on TV. If not, the chief's name will be on, name and picture will be on TV. Because Michelle Richie, Aurora Martin are right around the corner. Remove J. Edgar Hoover's name from the FBI building in Washington DC and remove George Wallace's name from the town in Mobile, Alabama. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Gus. Before the meeting began, you all held a moment of silence for Patrick, whose murder, whose execution by GRPD, you all have been actively trying to cover up, to sweep it under the rug to protect your pristine sense of self-worth and ego. Mark Washington, you said that you have a murderer in your prayers, a murderer. Local activists have been up here telling you all for years now that this kind of thing would happen, it would only be a matter of time. I said that up here in September! And now it's happened. Because of your gross negligence, a man, a father, a son, a friend, a person, a human being, Patrick Leoya, is dead. GRPD executed him, they shot him in the back of the head while he was, he had his face in the pavement and his hands behind his back. So don't you dare try to act as if you care, as if you listen to us, the community, in any capacity, as if you haven't been ignoring us, silencing us, and doing nothing but offering empty, empty words with no action. You guys haven't done anything! You suggested we join the force once, actually, to try and change it from the inside. There's no changing a system that was created on racism and brutality led by a pathetic excuse of a man, whose record involves 12 use of force reports and nine allegations, all of which are available to request to view on CPDP.co, by the way. Feel free to do that, I've done it, I'm waiting. You suggested that we become part of the system that murdered someone. I hope each and every one of you on this board never has another moment of peace for the rest of your lives. May you all never have happiness again. You are despicable, you are the lowest of the low, and I want to make sure you all lose your jobs. I don't want to see any of you up here ever again. You guys need to release the murderer's name, show his face plaster everywhere. I don't know why we're protecting him. Seventy-two hours are up. What is his name? Release the video unedited, because we know from GRPD's actions tonight, littering this city with barricades and fencing is not the actions of an innocent party. They have done wrong and they need to pay. Justice for Patrick. Fuck you guys.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Kendra, and I was not planning to come up here to speak today, but the quote that came to me, that brought me, even though I do not like speaking in front of people, is the fact that silence is complicit. The lack of accountability for the GRPD is one thing that I know of, that's, there's so many other systems that I know exist within this community that are, that go unacknowledged. And they're within the same age demographic of Patrick Leola. I work with young people between the ages of 18 and 24 who are experiencing housing instability. And I got an email the other day where there was a list of 154 names of young people who are experiencing housing instability. Many of them come from the same communities where Patrick Leola lived. And I asked the question here today, what is being, what do I do with those names? When I can't, I do an assessment with someone and I have no place to recommend them, for them to receive the supports that they need, not just housing, mental health supports, connections to employment and education resources. But I do see on TV sometimes millions of dollars that are going to build the reputation for this community that I've called home for the last seven years. And I ask myself, who matters? And I know, I don't even have to, I don't even have to ask myself. I know what matters and I know who matters. And the question I see on the names in front of here, we talk about policies and procedures, I know who those are for too. And they're not for the young people that I work with. And those young people who have been told that they haven't done anything for the community, I work with them. I see what they're doing despite all the other things that are going on in their lives. I see their action. I saw them, I saw, I saw some of them today. And I ask myself, what matters? Do policies and procedures matter? Or does the, looking into someone's eyes and looking at their humanity and seeing what needs to be done and doing something about it despite the consequences that might happen because of the positions that you may hold? And I no longer come to meetings and despite my fear of speaking up front, I'm not, I'm no longer going to be complicit in my silence.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hello. My name is Julian, and I am from the third ward. I am going to start with a quote from this very commission board. "GRPD has not killed anyone yet." These are words that were spoken and left unchallenged by the board before me. This point that we have reached was addressed as an indicator of reason to not defund the GRPD. This was framed as a point that was acceptable to reach as an indicator. Rather than focusing as a city on addressing what you know and working towards a resolution, a narrative process and delay has now been woven while barricades are erected, preparing for the response to the pain cultivated by the actions and rhetoric encouraged by this very board, as if this city is some outside force and not the force that built this city in the first place. Solutions that are meaningful and impactful are solutions that display leadership, solutions that don't treat the people that create the power of the city as enemies, solutions that we have yet to enact. These ideas, time and time again, are called for, but rather than resolve our issues, rather than maintain a pattern of transparency promised to us, we have been met with the idea that was spoken aloud, "GRPD hasn't killed anyone yet." I have lost complete faith in the ability for policing as this city runs it, as well as in the ability of this council before me. Release the footage, do not show preferential treatment to an action taken in cold blood when the actor is wearing a uniform. The people who built this city, the people who make it what it is every day, are too often treated as secondary, and I call for that to be changed with whatever comes next. And may peace someday be something we can know from creating a just world. Justice for Patrick, and I hope an aquarium and amphitheater are worth the social costs of every service ignored and gutted.
Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Libby. I live in the second ward. I was born and raised in Grand Rapids. I'm here tonight mostly because I want to address the fact that this young man that was killed this last week, he's an image bearer of God, just like all of you are. And also, I want to remind you all that we are called as Christians to love our neighbor as ourselves. It's not love to shoot somebody down in the middle of the street. It's not what any of you want for your children or yourselves, or for your neighbors. And yet, it seems to be kind of okay here. The other thing I'm kind of struck with is everybody is assuming that they know what's on the video. And it's because you guys don't have any credibility. The police don't have any credibility. They just don't. We don't believe what you guys say. I mean, I'm in my late 40s, and corruption in the police goes back to, I mean, I've seen it my whole life. This is not a new thing, but it's been left unchecked for generations, and this is what we get. We get a police state of people that have no fear of consequences. I've also worked, I worked for DART for a couple of years here in Grand Rapids, and I had access then to CAD and Jailview and all those things. And I don't know if you guys don't have access to those things, but you can see the inequity. You can see who is being arrested every single day. They're being arrested for traffic violations. You know, I know obviously a lot of white people in Grand Rapids, and I'll tell you something, I have a really heavy foot. I've never been pulled over, not once. I've had expired tags on my car, nobody's pulled me over. What's different? I think we know what's different. And the gaslighting, that there's not, that doesn't happen, they're not judging people by their race. I mean, that's why you don't have any credibility, because you say things like that. You say things like, "We're not trying to hide anything from you." Come on. I mean, when you get a court order that allows you to destroy evidence and you do it the very next day, so the news can't foil it, we know you're hiding stuff from us. So please, you know, I don't know what your options are as a city commission, but I have to believe you have more power than what you're showing that you do. I have to believe that. And for everybody who's concerned about voting people out of office, this is the first time in my life I was kind of grateful, I voted against it when it happened, but they're all term limited too, so, just so you know.
Thank you. Thanks.
And I am, I vote every election.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard? Go ahead, it's your time to speak. Can we?
I'm willing to wait.
Okay, thanks.
So, my name is Jenny, I live in Grand Rapids. And I remember standing in the polling booth, trying to put women in power, and I specifically was circling in Bliss's name. And I had this sinking feeling in my gut. I didn't know why, but I guess it would be flash forward to March 2021, and called into one of these meetings about the police brutality to the protesters. I was the very first one, and you looked down, you didn't give a fuck. You immediately went to do whatever it was on there. The disrespect I see is just incredible. And especially, we had someone speaking up here, they said they were specifically talking to the police department. I didn't see you looking. This has gone on, don't even want to get that far, but the fact that we even have police pointing guns at pregnant women on their porches, that's not okay. We have them coming at, oh, yes, thank you, thank you, yes. This is 100% not okay. And then have this friggin goofball come up, say, "What's going on, guys?" You tell us! Yup.
Can we let her, please let her speak?
Oh, they're just echoing the same thing, I'm with it. So, we are in it together, indeed. You keep calling for transparency, but put up a barricade. How is that transparent? It has been over a week since we saw video, since we heard names. Nothing, there's no excuse for this. We want the video uncut. We want all the videos, be it on the dash cam, the one from the passenger, every single one, uncut. This is ridiculous. Shame, 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 shame. All of you, blood is on your hands, I hold my time. And I hope that you all continue looking at our community, because I'm not saying anything groundbreaking you should be taking notes about right now. Look at our community. No? No? I'm speaking to you. Yes, paying, pay your tax dollars. Listen to us. Listen to us.
I can't wait until Will sees this news.
I'm gonna remember all these names, never again.
Thank you.
Don't say anything you don't mean.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Natalie Beversloos and my family moved to Grand Rapids when I was 10, which was a whole 42 years ago. Tonight, we've heard a lot about the injustices and the problems that are evident in Grand Rapids that have been made clear by this horrible, horrible incident and the frustrations that things were not changed as encouraged so that Patrick's murder could have been prevented. I'd like to look at this issue from a slightly different angle since the other angles have been very well covered. I'd like to point out an idea that I've heard expressed in several different words, several different ways. The saying really made me take a look at my own life more closely. Equality feels like oppression to the oppressor. Or perhaps you've heard this version, when you're accustomed to privilege, equality feels like oppression. I've lived a charmed, protected life because as an accident of birth, I am a member of the oppressive race. Okay? I want to let all of my elected officials, all of the people in power locally and nationwide, that I want to let them know that as a voting member of the oppressive race, I am willing to feel as if I am being oppressed, to experience less privilege if it means that all are being treated equally. Okay? If the people who answer to their electors need permission to change things, I give mine to you. Okay? I vote and I am willing to feel as if I am being oppressed. I am willing to experience less privilege if it means that all are being treated fairly. I call on everyone in power, look at your own expectations of privilege and then look at what the less fortunate around you experience in their daily lives. I encourage you to recognize that there, but for the grace of God or fate or chance, go, you or any of us really. As public servants of the entire city of Grand Rapids, not just the rich ones, not just the oppressive race ones, it is your job to truly work to bring experiences, to bring experiences and expectations into balance for all who live and love in our city and in our world. Even as I see the darkness, the cruelty, the fear and the clutching greed that pours out of so many of my fellow citizens and out of myself at times, I hold on to hope. Hope that the human soul will ascend to the heights, hope that we will see the benefits that await us when all humans can truly live and work and grow together, not as one being.
Thank you, thank you.
But as a multi-sold entity.
Thank you.
And let us experience that life, please.
Thank you.
I'm Russ Olstead, West Side, Grand Rapids. I first started coming to city commission meetings in December of 2015 when the vote I was to, to give assault rifles in police cars. And from that point to the beginning of the pandemic, I rarely missed a meeting. I rarely missed any public meeting around policing. Hundreds of pages of suggestions, of reforms, of ways to avoid this. And that's just over the last five to seven years. To reform a generational problem that's been happening for hundreds. And yet we're still here. And we're here because we've all failed. You have failed, I have failed. The system has failed. We tried to listen to best practices of a system that is broken, that does not have best practices. It has broken practices. There are ways to keep communities safe without brutalizing them. And we know this, we see it everywhere else in this world except here. The suggestions that the community has made, the reforms that have been presented to you over the last decade are there. They should have been implemented, they weren't, they should have been. The true way to stop this brutality, one, I shouldn't say the true way, I don't know for sure, but the way that I see that makes sense is actually addressing the training practices. I've been through the police trainings for the civilian appeals board. I've been through trainings for the citizens' police academy because I wanted to better understand the why of what leads to these types of interactions, the escalation instead of de-escalation, the reasoning behind trying to escalate. We're way out of a, out of a terrible situation and it makes no sense. It doesn't work. It winds up with people hurt, it winds up with people dead. We all know it, you know it, I've talked to you guys about it, you know it. We need to change this. It's already too late. It's already too late, but the power is there. Each one of you has it. Manager Washington, you have it too, take care of negotiating most of these issues that are in union contracts that keep us from even learning about this stuff for 72 hours. Stupid things like that. Easy, low hanging fruit like that, that could be addressed, that could stop these things from happening. Please.
Thank you, Russ.
Yeah, so Commissioner Robert S. Womack just came down here to support the movement, to have more transparency. I, I definitely have a lot of police mad at me from time to time and now I see activists because when you do a news story, everything gets edited and clipped. But I definitely want to give the young people credit for having a peaceful mark. You can only have that if you want to, but there are other activists, just like we will see as this video is released. I met with the title activist at Lotus Bud, maybe not all the members of the group know that, so I, people knew I was coming, plus the family welcomed me. And one thing I love about this family, they accepted me like family. And I believe one of the biggest things you could do for the family to be active was me connecting them with national civil rights lawyer Ben Crump, who has also been the lawyer for George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. He will be back in town with me and others on Thursday. As we talk about transparency, I want to move on to, somebody mentioned a political hit. This, this city commission I've taken up for a lot of times, but during these last week, I found out there are a few. There's a lot of heat coming at Mark Washington, but I give him credit that he has had a super amount of meetings trying to get the right people in Grand Rapids to meet so he can understand the city better because he's new here. But we have people that are natives of Grand Rapids. We have people who've been here a long time on this board that do have a political hit out on me. And when you call them during this crisis and say, if we don't stick together right now, we don't stop arguing. Yes, this is an election year, but I haven't even put anything about I'm running. How can I do that when black men is dying in the middle of the street? How can I do that when they have come down here all this time, these young people saying somebody gonna die and now they're right, but they're still not at the table? To sit on the phone and talk with some people on this commission, powerful people, and say, you got enough time in the middle of this? We about to release one of the most horrific videos, not only this city, the nation will ever see. Ben Crump is not here for no reason. And that doesn't mean all the police are bad in the world because that always gets edited, it can't get edited today. But you got some bad tomatoes and the code of blue makes you protect them. And it has to stop. We want to see more de-escalation, we want more training, but that's enough about the system because everybody's gonna be emotionally hurt when they see this. And the family is asking for peace when this comes out. So I thank the young people who have been marching peacefully, but we know we're gonna have challenges.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We don't want to see any more people die.
Thank you, thank you.
And the commission need to get their stuff together. For the ones of you who have your stuff together, thank you, but there are some that need to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Thank you. All right, next. Those who wish to be, all right, thanks. It's your, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Faith Platonz. I was born in Grand Rapids and I've spent most of my life here. I'm 33 years old. I can see that some of you are starting to get tired. John, you especially, your eyelids are getting heavy. I bet you can't wait to go home, crawl in safe and sound in your bed, have a late night snack. I wish that this city could keep you here all night, bearing witness to the pain of the black community. I personally have driven around with expired tags since November of 2020. I just renewed them the last week. I have a turn signal that doesn't work and one of my headlights is out. Yeah, I'm not very responsible. Nothing has happened to me. Can you imagine why? I went to a peaceful protest last year, the police showed up in riot gear. I was scared. They started intimidating the protesters and putting their hands on people. Can you imagine how scared I would be if I was black? I will never understand that fear. My grandparents were immigrants. They came over from Latvia during World War II. They didn't speak English. They came here to escape violence. It was a long and hard journey for them to get there, as it is for many immigrants in this country. None of them were murdered. Can you imagine why? This was an execution, this was a murder. The police need to be defunded. It is absolutely ridiculous and unacceptable that the tapes have not been released, that the name of the murderer has not been released. Actions must be taken. God forbid someday that police brutality could affect you personally, could affect your family personally. Is that when you're gonna start caring? You are responsible. What you, what you do next is important. You owe it to the community to ensure justice is served. I stand the rest of my time.
Thank you.
I live and was born and raised in Grand Rapids. I went to East Kentwood High School, which now has over 80 languages represented and we are a space of great diversity here in West Michigan. And right now we have a true tragedy that will bring the eyes of the world here. Ben Crump said at the, at the session on Sunday, and for the commissioners who went, even with all this tragedy and all the silence, the fact that you go now is in the face of chaos and tragedy, time for, for something to happen for Patrick and for Patrick's life to truly matter. Silence is oppression. I've said this to you multiple times last year. I've been with the defund movement and I know that you need a voice now because even you are threatened by the union, a racist union that you know has been bad. So my speech is dedicated to that space and to you who are struggling to speak in the face of power and weapons and guns. Peaceful people have a hard time and I know you're threatened and I know when the defunding almost happened that you were threatened by Voice for the Badge, some of you were threatened. And I'm sorry that that's the case and that this greatness of a nation is thrust upon Grand Rapids doorstep. We're in the backyard of a billionaire in a country founded on genocide, the place of the three fires, the Odawa, Ochibwe and the Potawatomi, the genocide of the past. We are six years after Make America Great Again. 400 to 600% of hate crimes rose after Trump. We had a coup, attempt. He said, stand back and stand by. This national stage is here and we need to work together and we need a democratic city behind us to face that union who has threatened even you. And I know it's hard and I know it takes courage, but if you don't have that courage, just step down. Just step down. Because we need leaders now and we need to stand up to the union. Why is Kurt Vander Coy still there when he unconstitutionally arrested a citizen and marine who had his passport, suffering from PTSD? You did, in the first time in 20 years, said your internal investigation into, police investigation is not enough, go back to the drawing board. And, and they did. He was given leave, but then you gave him an apology months later when what, we were gone? Well, look, we're still here and now another person is dead because you created a culture of violence to go unaddressed and unannounced and your platitudes are nothing in the face of the inaction and the silence of your actions matters. Patrick's life mattered and he cannot be here today to speak. And for all the people who are inaccessibly, they can't be here because of COVID, you shut down the Zoom and there would be hundreds of people here otherwise. The city is threatened and we need true, true leaders. And I am here for all of you who now cannot speak because power is beyond you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hello, everyone. How are you? I'm a little sad to be here under these circumstances, especially because I know every single one of you. And I remember standing here a long time ago when ICE came into town, into Grand Rapids, Michigan and destroyed our community and destroyed families and took father and mothers away from their children. Many of you know that because you were here. I teach about fearless. Good morning, Grand Rapids. I'm sure you guys have seen it over and over and over. I probably shouldn't even be standing here right now, I'd probably get blockballed, I don't know. I feel that way sometimes. But I gotta tell you, your city is crying. Your city is bleeding. And it has been for a long time. George Floyd was just the first step for the nation and for the world to see what's going on in the United States of America. I remember walking and I said, you gotta take a look at your city. You're the one that's in charge. I remember speaking to each and every single one of you, the ones that allowed me to. I learned from a very old man. He said, Marco, what has happened, has happened. Here we are. The past, yesterday, you cannot change, but you can change today. And you can make the next 24 hours in this city, start the process of healing. And you have that choice. This is your time. Last time I sat here, I also told you the same thing. I'm asking you, I'm asking you to please listen to your community. The city is growing, the buildings are getting higher, your responsibility is getting bigger, but your community is getting shunted. When you say take pictures in front of new buildings and new businesses, take a look at the small businesses also that's out there that are hurting. Your city is hurting and it's time to stand up fearless and speak for them and stand with them and make the difference that you were voted out to, to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Pastor Daniel Scutt. I've been a pastor in the inner city here of Grand Rapids for over 40 years. And I want to say that I understand your job is not easy. But according to Holy Scripture, God has appointed you to your positions. He's allowed you to become in your positions. And to the police as well. I want to personally thank you for the job you do, because you also have been put in place by the Almighty God. Grand Rapids is not perfect. And by the way, I'll be praying for you. I know you're gonna be facing some difficult decisions. I pray for you every day anyway, as a group, not by name, but as a group, as well as the police. And if I could, if I could speak with Patrick's family, I would have the privilege to say the same.
Okay.
Okay, I will.
Please let him, please let him speak. Please let him speak.
I'm also a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. More importantly, and again, Grand Rapids is not perfect, but I just want to say this. Where's your outrage for all the innocent children?
Mr. Scott, Mr. Scott, speak to us. Don't speak to us.
Where's your outrage for all the innocent children being murdered in Grand Rapids at 320 East Fulton?
Okay, Mr. Scott, speak to us. No, 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 he has a right to share his opinion, whether you agree with it or not. But Mr. Scott, you need to direct your comments to us.
Thank you.
Okay. People have a right to share their opinion, even if we don't agree with them.
120 innocent babies are slaughtered, on average, every month at 320 East Fulton. Many of them are black lives. Why don't you speak up for them?
Please, please let him speak, even if you don't agree with him. I, please. Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
They matter to Jesus Christ. The Lord Jesus Christ died for them, as He died for you, and as He died for me.
Okay, please, please let him speak.
Believe on the Lord Jesus Christ, and you shall be saved. But I'm here to speak up for the unborn. They are Grand Rapidsians as well. 120 murdered, on average, every month at 320 East Fulton. Where's your outrage for them? Why don't you march for them? Because they're, more than 50% of them are African-American.
Okay, please, please let him speak.
Speak up for them, just as you speak up for this family. Thank you.
All right, time's up. Okay, all right, please, you know what? Okay, that everyone, please, people say things sometimes that we don't agree with, and we have to still respect their right to come up here and speak. That's, okay, let's give people an opportunity to share their opinion. Even if we don't agree with them, they should be able to speak their mind here safely. Okay, so, sir, it's... All right, we, thank you, Mark. Thank you.
It's really disheartening to be here for this subject matter right now. I'm a Divine Booker, born and raised in Grand Rapids, Michigan. You know, it seems like the term transparency and trusting the process is just being tossed around like some clay. After creating an oversight office of accountability, we would think that an officer not being questioned about the killing of an individual in the community would be a major issue, an issue of urgency that was about eight days ago. So when we use this term transparency, and we talking about processes and systems, it seems like it's just being played with, because this window is transparent. I could see every last one of you. But not only have the family not seen the body, not seen the video, we don't know who the officer is in the community, trusting the process doesn't even know, not only the officer's name, but any type of accountability from the only board that has the power to hold the individual accountable, to fire him. So a week later, we looking at this, and we saying, "Release the video." We seeing the police put barricades up around the police department. All of that only heightens the fear in the community that has been echoed from pretty much every community member here tonight. What's going on?
I just wanna say, you know, that's, it's an old song saying, "You can't let the devil get in your car, 'cause he surely wanna drive." Chief, remember me from Chicago, Illinois? North Avenue, North Avenue and Chalk. P'up, Joe, Joe. How you doing?
All right, are you, is that, are you okay? I mean, do you want a little more time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Just, and like 30 seconds, please?
So when we hear, when we hearing this transparency, we hearing the release of the video demands. We already, as you can tell, hearing the echoes of the community, think that the video would be tampered with, but like, it's a 72 hours that we were told for the officer to be questioned. So even if you wasn't releasing the video because of safety measures and trying to put everything together so that the nation don't come to Grand Rapids and tear it up, because from 2017 to 2018 to 2019 to 2020 to 2021 to now, here it is, 2022, and everybody knows that, like, everybody's like tired of talking, feeling like they ain't heard. So transparency should start with that officer being questioned at least.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Booker. Thank you. All right, it's, it's...
Good evening.
Let him speak.
My name is Eric Brown, resident of Third Ward, lifelong resident here, also the president of the, excuse me, of the Urban League of West Michigan. As I've said other times before, I'm glad that, well, not said this, but I've asked for the video to be released several times before. I'm glad to hear that the video is being released tomorrow. What I also do wanna say is be mindful that we know last couple of years of what's going on. There's been a lot of protesters, but what has happened, I mean, it's been a lot of time before that. It's been years before that, when there's been various groups that have come before this very commission. Many of you guys weren't here, that have asked for reformed in different ways, for how we police in public, how we police our community, and how we provide what should be public safety to our community. So I won't go down the line of that. We all know what has happened there. And I kinda wanna echo that gentleman, a couple, couple people before me. We can't change yesterday. We can't go back and redo things from yesterday, but we can learn from mistakes from yesterday. And that starts immediately. As we go forward, as a group, as this body right here, as a community right here, big days are ahead of you guys. Big days are gonna be ahead of you guys. Not only the city, not only the nation, but remember, this was an international community as well. So all eyes of the, beyond the nation are gonna be on you guys. So my prayer is gonna be with you. I've already prayed, continue to pray for Patrick's family. So that's gonna happen. I understand from their family that they, and I wanna urge everyone to maintain your right to protest, but do it peacefully, peacefully. Do it according to the wishes of the family, to have a peaceful protest. We'll get through this. It's gonna change our city. We're all gonna be changed after this. Every last one of us. I know several of you guys. We're gonna be changed after this, for this community. But just going forward, I'm all about the transparency. I'm all about making sure that the community is on step and with every page of the step, with every step that's gonna happen from here on out. The community needs to be aware of and be known ahead of time, so that things can be transparent, things can be expected, and there's no question about what you guys' actions are. So that's where we stand. Tomorrow is gonna be, it's gonna be another day. And again, like I said, we can't change yesterday. We can only affect what we do tomorrow. Don't let things get in the way from your past. Let tomorrow be tomorrow, and be ready to stand for this community the way that you, that we need you guys to stand for this community at this time. So that's my charge to you guys. We're gonna stand, we're gonna watch the community. That's what we're supposed to do. We're gonna watch. This is our community, just like everybody said, as well as you guys' community. So just charge you guys to not think about all those things, but think about how you can affect what's gonna go forward for this and stand. And I do stand with the Layola family. And I know I said that wrong. I stand with Patrick's family. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
My name is Kimberly Williams. I live in the Third Ward. I don't know what the video footage will reveal tomorrow. However, as someone who has studied and worked in the criminal justice system, I know all too well that the system thrives on the mistreatment of black people. When things like this happen, words about the systems and the processes often are thrown around. Let me say that systems and processes are put in place by people. And currently, you are the people, are the people in charge that will be able to have impact with regards to systems, processes, laws, regulations. So we are asking you as a community to take a look at those systems and see how we can bring equity and protect the citizens of this community by examining those systems, laws, regulations, and processes, so that something like this doesn't happen again. Additionally, this will take work. This will be uncomfortable. I'm asking that you lean into that uncomfortableness, because that's where the change will take place. You all have the power to disrupt. I'm asking for you to disrupt these systems. We need your greater service to make greater progress in this city. So I'm asking you to lean into that work, so that this city can benefit. The citizens can benefit and feel safe, all citizens. And again, we are going to support you. As one lady said, "We give you permission to do the work." Please own that, and we will be watching and monitoring, and we want to also be a supporter in that work. So we thank you in advance. And I, again, ask that you all in the community at large to pray for the family. It is definitely a difficult time, and pray for each other. It hurts.
Thank you.
And the slides make you feel like you're gonna be interrogated. My name is Lorena Guayo. Soy hija de migrantes. También soy migrante. I'm a daughter of immigrants, and I'm mostly an immigrant. And I also used to work with immigrants and refugees' families, and my heart goes out to Patrick and his family. I've been trying not to listen to all the, it's impossible for your heart not to break. I've been an activist in the immigrant community, an activist in my, in my community. I live in the southeast area. I live on grids. And it's right there in my community. To the protesters, continue protesting. Stand up, use your voice. Our community is here, we're ready to support. I'm here to support. The Latino community is here to support. Do it. Tomorrow is gonna be a hard day for everyone. We are hurting right now, and tomorrow is gonna be even more hurt. And we need to overcome that and fight for justice. Justicia para Patrick, justice for Patrick, justice for our community. We've been saying this. I've been a very active activist since 2017. I also was a community organizer 17 years ago, and we're talking, saying, talking about the same changes. We are tired of waiting. We need transformation. We need to transform our city to be equitable for everyone. We all wanna thrive. I went for a hike this afternoon after work, because I needed to process this, but I had to interrupt that, because I had to be here. It's important for us to make this transformation. We need to do better, and I, I'll pray for you for strength and courage, because that's what's gonna take, courage to transform our city for everyone to be able to live here. Immigrants, our black community, everyone has the right to live in peace and with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Marisol, and I'm here today as a person of color, as a mother, and as a member of Grand Rapids, and as a human. I've been in this, in these meetings for the past years, and I have not missed one. And I'm behind, I'm seeing every one of you. And I have heard racial profiling, police brutality, overuse of power, lack of integrity. We don't feel safe, unsafed, disrespect, intimidation, sympathy, fear. I keep hearing this, you know, and it's been years. It's been four hours, and those are the words that echo. I feel like we are asking just to be treated as humans. We're just asking integrity. I keep hearing the word transparency, and I keep hearing it over and over again. And I feel like I hear it, because it's not something that is in place. I think we are asking for equity, and I feel that's something that we deserve. Accountability and empathy. It's so hard for most of you to feel empathy, because you are not in our place. I am a mother, and I have two kids of color. And I know how hard it is for you to go outside and be scared. All we're asking is for the relocation of the budget. We're not asking for you to defund the police, but we're asking you to give them cultural awareness. We need them to know who are they taking care of. We need them, to train them to defend us and not to defend from us. Once again, thank you so much for your time, and I'm usually echoing everybody else's voice, and this is the first time that I'm here. And I am so sad. My heart is broken. I love this city. I love my people. Let us know what is it that you need from us, so that you can hear us, so that we can change things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking up. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close that public comment period, and I'm gonna turn to my colleagues tonight, and I think I'll do it a little bit different tonight. I think I'm gonna refer first to my colleagues in the Third Ward. And so I'll start, I think, tonight with Commissioner Lanier, my senior Third Ward commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I, my heart is heavy. I, I think we, we are in a place right now that I would describe as the darkest day in our city's history. I know certainly one of the darkest days since I've been an elected official. And, and I think we're all hurting. And I think we're, we're in a place now where it's really challenging to process our... And I think we're, we're in a place now where it's really challenging to process our hurt because we know that there is more to come. So as you're trying to process where you are right now, you're in anticipation of the video and, and what it, what it will reveal. I thank everyone, as I always do, and I've done this since I've been on this commission, taking notes because I reflect on them after meetings. I've done it for every single meeting, even when we were virtual, because I reflect on the comments here. And it impacts the decisions that I make, and it impacts the policies that I think we create. And so I think, I want to thank everyone for coming and those who have remained here in expressing yourselves, and we are no different. And you all need to understand that. We're no different. My heart is grieving, and I'm not exempt from the stories that have been told tonight, and no one in my family is either. And someone, well, multiple people talked about a broken system, and that's the reality. And it's a broken system that wasn't built by people who look like me. And I can't begin to tell you all how hard it's been for so many years to try and dismantle it. This ain't easy. And I'm, I'm not here to run down the list of my accolades and anything that I've been involved in to try to dismantle it because that's not who I am, but I want you all to know, I've been trying. And even when people have been coming, I made a commitment, probably over a year now, I'll come to this meeting if you all want to talk to me. I'm coming a half an hour early. Let's, let's have some dialogue because this isn't the time for it. That's the time for you all to speak and us to listen. And I've only had probably two or three people take me up on the offer. And I've opened my door. I'm frequently given my contact information, and I'm actually okay if I'm not the person you want to talk to because I don't have to be. But what I want you all to know is that more than any other time in this city's history that we all need to be on the same page is today. We need to be on the same page for Patrick Loyola's family, for their healing, for progress, for whoever was talking about tomorrow, for tomorrow, because we can't change what happened yesterday and what we, what we all were hoping it wasn't going to ever happen. I'm here because of this very issue. Someone said we were, I do feel called to this work. And I remember the moment in, in our, in my history when it registered for me that I would be here in this seat instead of on the school board. And it was because of an incident that happened in the community. And so I came here trying to prevent this very thing from happening and have worked tirelessly in a very challenging system that's broken. And the only thing that, you know, I'll, I'll close with, you know, some of the things that I think I've heard tonight and, and city manager, I frequently do this after we're hearing public comment, is turn to you to say, here is some of the things I'm hearing that I think is important for follow-up. And one of them is the clarity of roles in all of this. There are too many players, and maybe we've created a policy that created that. So what we heard is, we don't want the GRPD policing themselves in incidents like this. So we created a policy that said, okay, we'll have a third party investigate these incidents. So now MSP is in, is on the scene. And this is the first time we've had a fatal shooting that they're investigating. And so we're trying to sort through all of that, and I think it's important for us to delineate all of the roles of the different parties and what roles they play so that I can no longer be confused about it and the public and the family. So what's MSP's role? What's GRPD's role? What's OPA's role? What's IA's role? So that we can all fully understand that. I think the other thing, as I'm saying I'm ending, that I'll, I'll leave with is, as we're talking about the various roles and the timelines and all of that, I think the best that we can, continue with the transparency that we've given and, and honoring commitments that are being made. And I appreciate that, Chief, that you said what you said last week, and even when there were external forces saying that you needed to change your mind, you said, I'm going to stand firm on that. By the end of next week, I am going to release the tapes. And so I just want us to be in a position where we, we are looking for the future. And I know that there were a couple ideas that have been shared, but I'm going to keep doing what I said I was going to do, and I'll be here half hour before every meeting to have that dialogue. Commissioner Moody and I are talking about community conversations. We're talking about getting the right support, trauma support, because I don't know about you all, but these things are challenging to watch. We've seen countless incidents nationally on TV and on social media. You go from laughing at a meme to seeing somebody dropping dead. That ain't healthy. And so we need to have some measures in place for healing, restoration, to be able to address the trauma that we are all experiencing through all of this. I don't want to tell anybody how they should behave, think, or any of that, but all I can say is, thank you for coming and thanks for sharing and expressing yourselves tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me say to all of you who are sitting out here tonight, let me apologize to you for getting my responsibility of being your commissioner. I dropped the ball. I was elected to listen and to hear you, and I ended up scolding you. I'm sorry for that. I am sorry that this tragedy has taken place in our city. I am saddened and heartbroken for Patrick's family and for Patrick's life. I ask that you would give us and me another chance and let us do this thing right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ruppert?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say that I, I receive what you've brought tonight. I receive the anger that you've shared. I receive the, especially with gratitude, the solidarity that you're showing for Patrick's family. And, and I want to, and the solidarity you're showing to everyone who is hurting right now and who was traumatized by this, the loss of Patrick's life. And I thank you for showing up here, for expressing yourselves in power, and especially for your solidarity. I do want to express my condolences to the family of Patrick and to all who love him and know him. This is just truly a heartbreaking loss for our community. So I, I see, I feel, and I hear your anger and your pain and your grief tonight. And I also know that an event like this sends an additional ripple of additional pain and trauma throughout the immigrant community and the black community, and to anyone who's experienced violence. There are no adequate words. It's trauma on top of trauma on top of trauma, and I, and I know that it's incredibly heavy. And I want to acknowledge the harm that this has caused our community, and I'm terribly, terribly sorry that it's happened. I am grateful to our city manager's commitment to moving as quickly as possible. I fully support Chief Winstrom's decision to release all of the footage tomorrow. I'm also thankful to you, Commissioner Lanier, for your insistence that we direct people to appropriate mental health supports as, as this is all released and unfolded. I urge the Michigan State Police and our Internal Affairs to, for these reviews to be as expedient as they're able. The sooner that we have all the information, we can begin to build the plan for how we can ensure that there's accountability and what next steps we need to take. And I'll be ready to join hands with my colleagues here, with the city manager, with the chief, and with the community to do what's right and to what is, to do what's just. And I just want to end with, with some gratitude for the, for you colleagues up here and for the moments we shared today as we processed and cared for one another. I learned so much from each of you today, and I'm grateful for that. And I encourage all of the community, as this comes out, to continue to care for one another because it is traumatic, and we're all going to need each other in these coming days. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of outcry for transparency, and there should be outcry for transparency. This process deserves transparency. There's been outcry for accountability, and we should all demand accountability. There's been outcry for justice in this all. We should demand justice. But as we, as we navigate through this process, I think, for me, one thing that's also important is that we get it right. Because at the end of the day, none of those things matter if we don't get it right. And so there's a balance between, that we must strike between expediency and doing it correctly. And I do share in the sentiment of, of our city manager, our law department, our chief of police, in trying to make sure that we balance those things, that we go as fast as possible while preserving the integrity of all of these processes so that we can get it right. Patrick deserves that we get this right. The officer who's been involved in this shooting deserves that it be done right. And so I, I'm hopeful and thankful that, you know, the chief has, has made a commitment to get all four videos out unedited to the community tomorrow. And I have all the belief in the world that we're going, you, the community, will see all four videos tomorrow unedited. And that's going to elicit a lot of strong feelings on, because of those videos. And the videos aren't the end. Seeing the videos is not the end of this process. It's, it's the beginning of another process. And, you know, I'm hopeful that as a community, we, we can, we will overcome this. We will be a better community because of this. But it's going to be some painful days ahead for all of us, and I just, again, I want to make sure that whatever happens, we do this right. And this is not, you know, this is not, you know, for all the calls of all the negative things that, you know, you may believe that are done wrong in Grand Rapids, we don't do this very often that I can remember in my tenure ever. So this is a new process, and this is something, again, we, in an effort to be more transparent and create a layer of accountability and transparency, have transferred this process to be investigated by the Michigan State Police so that it is an independent third-party investigation. But that creates challenges in and of itself that we must navigate. So, you know, there are trying times ahead. I do, you know, thank you all for coming tonight and, and sharing your, your fears and your frustrations, and we are listening. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Commissioner Esasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Since last week Monday, there have been a number of responses. People reaching out, work that's needed to be done, conversations and press conferences that were had. I want to say thank you, Commissioner Lanier, for reminding us that in all the responses today, that we needed to continue to center our humanity. And that sometimes sitting up here means that you wear quite a bit of armor, that you do feel a little bit disconnected. I can remember it from being out in the audience in the past when other things have happened in this city and not quite, not quite seeing the line of what would happen or the timeline. And now I am here in the spot. And never for a moment forgetting that somebody lost their life, Mr. Patrick Loyola and his family and who are grieving during this time, as well as our community who has reached out to me angry, sad, distraught, in shock, and overall feeling helpless. So many people telling me that they see themselves, their brothers, their sons, their fathers, and Patrick. And reminding me that at the core, their feeling is, why are these rules different? Seeing things that have happened across the nation and wondering why certain things happen to people. We heard stories today of people who've experienced stops or not experienced stops. And really reminding us, reminding me in those conversations that they don't want us to feel bad for a day, for a week, for a month, until the end of our terms. But they want us to continue to focus on that policy piece. And as you said earlier today and just a few minutes ago, Commissioner, that is something, you've been on the commission now for 10 years and served in other elected offices, and knowing that it's not something that we will see overnight. I too appreciate the responses that our city manager, our city attorney, and our police chief, and Brandon Davis have done during this time. I can't say anything up here that will make you not be distrusting, not feel like there is something that you're not being told, that there might be a conspiracy piece. All I can say is how I see this from my perspective. And since last week, I've been running through, what are the things that I could have done differently? And I think many of us have thought that, too. And there's not one thing that sticks out, but it's really this complex system that was mentioned today that continues to need to be unraveled and to focus on those policy pieces. So I want to say thank you for people who came out tonight. I know people said, we want to keep you here all night. When I signed up for this job, I know that I don't ever really know when I'm going to leave here tonight, and that is okay. But also remembering that this is not the only time that I would like to interact with people. So I, I share that same sentiment of, this was our time to listen. I too take notes so that I can reflect, so that I can focus, so I can remember who comes. And just thank you. Be safe. Take care of one another. Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
I want to suggest that everybody, if you're not angry and you're not grieving, then I will probably question your humanity, whether you're sitting up here or you're sitting in the audience or you're watching virtually. Angry because of the death of Patrick, grieving because of the death of Patrick, angry because of a system that's broken, angry because reform isn't moving fast enough, and grieving because we've seen this movie before. When I've had the opportunity to talk about this with others, I've often said that it obviously strikes different when it's, when it's in your own backyard. Many of us have watched it on television and have been impacted by it. And I talked about the, what I know to be the part of the African-American experience is the fact that we have this innate ability to grieve, even for those that we don't know. Grieve for those who live in other cities, other parts of the world, who have died in a way that was unjust. And you just, I've had that, I've had, I've been questioned about that before, like you didn't even know the person. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. There's something to be said about this connectivity, I think that's in play again, about being, as part of the African-American experience. I think it's part of our history as a people group in this country. I want to say this with regards to the thing that continues to be consistent throughout situations or incidents that occur, like the very one that occurred on last Monday. And that is, they all seem to be steeped And that is, they all seem to be steeped in fear. And I've never met anyone who's been able to operate at the optimum level when they're operating in fear. And I feel that that is probably one of the most consistent themes, whether you look at what happened last Monday, or any other incident that ended in the death of an unarmed Black man in our country. A lot of it comes from fear. And that's very much part of the reason that I grieve, very much part of the reason I'm Because we live in a world, we live in a country, in which historically, it's been about fear. And if it's one thing I will continue to commit to doing, in the role that I serve here, is to get to a place where we can operate with little to no fear. It's just absolutely ridiculous, the fact that there's fear of someone based on their ethnic background. And I would never expect, would never expect anyone to admit, "Yeah, I'm afraid of something." We don't do, as a society, we don't do that. But I think that it has been a pretty consistent theme, and I think that's one of the major undertakings that has to occur with regards to real reform, is to not see someone and assume that they are dangerous, or assume that they are going to bring you harm based on their appearance. And so I'm grieving, I'm angry, I'm righteously indignant, and, yeah, you're right, I'm tired. It's like, I know y'all tired. But I very much appreciate your presence, and I mean that. I mean that. You could, I appreciate your presence. We could've been here all night. Well, those who know me know what I was gonna say next, but I'm not supposed to be cussing. But I mean it. Like, it is what it is, man. So you all got the right to speak, and we have the responsibility to listen. So thank you for your presence.
Thank you, Commissioner. City clerk?
I have nothing to add.
City attorney?
I want to, first of all, add my condolences, but I also wanna share that, you talk about the people of color that sit here and we don't care. We have some of the same experiences. We're Black in America. We've been stopped, have a Black son and a Black grandson, that we have to have those same conversations with. So we don't take it lightly, and this has been horrific. We have spent hours with this, because we wanted to, as Commissioner O'Connor said, we wanna get it right. We wanna dot the i's, cross the t's. We want nothing that goes wrong on a technicality, and this doesn't work out the way that it should work out. So I know that you don't trust us, but we are doing everything that we could do. We do understand your feelings. We do feel the same way, the same hurt, the same disappointment. And just as you hold us accountable, it's our intent to hold people accountable. You need to understand, though, as Commissioner Lanier said, understand the roles. We don't control all of this, because there's three agencies involved. There's, of course, the city of Grand Rapids, and we're the employer of the police officers, and so we get to deal with the employment matters. But there's also that criminal piece, and because we do have that policy that whenever there's an officer-involved shooting, that MSP takes over that investigation. And so they've taken over that investigation, and I know it was in the media about the officer not yet being interviewed, and that was MSP. So you have to hold all of us accountable. MSP, who's doing the investigation, the county prosecutor, if MSP presents that case to the county prosecutor, and that will be the county prosecutor's responsibility to make that charge, or not make that charge. So that's the other agency. We don't get to control that. And then as far as, I know people want the video released, and we worked hard and fast to try to cover all the things we need to get it out sooner, which we are getting it out a lot sooner than we historically would've gotten it out. We hear you. We take this to heart, and I surely do, because I have, I lost a son. And so this is important, to me, it's important to everyone up here, and so we're not taking it lightly. Again, understanding historically, we're not trusted, but just like you have your eyes on this, and you're saying everybody around this country will have their eyes on this, we have our eyes on it as well. And we have a big burden to carry with this, but we're carrying it. And just like Commissioner Jones said, it's okay. Yeah, I'm tired. I've been up since four. But if we have to sit here all night to hear you, then we're doing that, and we're okay with that. It might not look like it, but we are hearing you. We might be writing, we're not on our phones, but we're trying to make sure that we capture what you're saying to us. And I understand we've had years of these conversations, years of it, and you wanna see change. We heard that, too. And so, just like we didn't get here overnight, we're not getting out of it overnight, but I believe, because I've been here all my life as well, that we are making some ground. We still need to make a lot more ground. But this, we're serious about this, we're committed about it. Our police chief is committed, our OPA Director of Oversight and Accountability is committed. We're meeting is over this every single day, and we mean for it to be well-handled, so we're not just here just saying stuff to be saying stuff to you. We mean it. You said, "I don't talk." Well, today, I'm talking. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. Thank you for sharing.
First time in two years. I didn't know what your voice sounded like right now.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners, for your leadership today, and I wanna thank the staff. City attorney mentioned all the work that goes on beyond the scene, and I can testify to the city attorney's effort in terms of helping us do this expeditiously, but this is systems work. And this city was created in 1850. The charter, and I was looking it up as the city attorney was speaking, and it says, "We the people of the city of Grand Rapids, Michigan," this is preamble to charter, "in order to perfect the municipal government, which shall ensure economical and efficient administration of city affairs, provide for the security of persons, to promote property and happiness and welfare for its people." And I started thinking about what I was hearing tonight, and the people of color, I can't, I'll just speak for myself. I wasn't here when that charter was written. That charter wasn't written by me or for me. But I'm here on the inside of the system to improve the outcome for all the people. That's what I've been, that's why I took the job here.
Please let it in.
That's why I took the job. So we have been trying to work with the system, but the way we change it, it's an inside-outside movement to change the system. So you can't just do it with people from the outside. You have to have people on the inside. And what I have seen, and I think that's what Commissioner Lanier was trying to communicate earlier, was communicating earlier, is the work that has been going. We've been, we've been working on reform, de-escalation, improving use of force, but we can do the work. We are not every person in the system. And so whenever that happens, and we've heard today, we wanna know what happened, why the system failed, transparency and accountability. So our commitment is to be as transparent as possible, and I spoke about that earlier, looking forward to that, as well as accountable for not only the system, but the people in the system. So I feel, as much as I too feel very concerned, frustrated, hurt, all of the range of emotions that everyone has shared today, I do feel hopeful that this death, Patrick's death, will not be in vain, that it will help us improve the system for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager.
I meant to say murder. He meant murder. Go ahead.
I can speak for myself.
Okay. Let's, I'll make a few final comments, and then we'll close the meeting. So I just wanna add a few things. My...
You asked about the city clerk. Was that a comment?
He, yeah, I already asked him. He said nothing. So I'll just end with a few final thoughts. I really appreciate all the comments by my colleagues. And, you know, my heart aches, like so many people in this community, about this tragedy, and it aches for the Loyah family. It's a horrible tragedy. It is. I am very sorry for this tragedy. I am very sorry that a family is grieving the loss of their son, of their loved one. And I know that the days before us, and the weeks before us, and the months before us, and the years before us, are gonna be extremely difficult days. It's gonna be a difficult time for Patrick's family, and it's gonna be a difficult time for our entire community. But what I know about this community, and what I love about this city, about our city, is that I have an incredible amount of faith in the people who call Grand Rapids home. I have incredible faith that in our community, we can come together, and as Kim said, we can come together and have, sit in the pain together, that we can have the difficult conversations. And I also believe that there is a deep sense of commitment, a deep love for this community and for one another, where people are willing to do the hard work. And I have always believed that out of anger and passion, true change can happen. Many of you said this tonight, and I agree. We can and we need to do better, and we have said that around this table. Every single one of my colleagues have said this since the day I have served with them. And I am committed, with the time that I have left, to do everything I can to work with community, to work with my colleagues around this table, to work, as the city manager said, internally, inside, as well as with community on the outside, to drive long-term systemic, systemic change, not short-term change, but long-term systemic change. And it is hard work. We are, as Commissioner Lanier said, we are dismantling decades and decades and decades of systemic racism. And it really does take all of us, every single one of us, to be a part of that. So again, I thank all of you for being here. Again, my prayers go out to the family as they enter another really difficult week, and I appreciate you all being here tonight. Word adjourned.